This evening, I await a motion, oh, yeah, I wait a motion to leave non-public.
Your Honor, I will be leave non-public and seal the minute.
Second, Your Honor.
Roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. Do you need another roll call here for this portion?
Yes.
We do, all right, all right. Do one more roll call.
So this is for attendance, Mayor McCaffrey?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Counselor Taber?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Moreau?
Here.
Counselor Bagley?
Here.
Counselor Lombardi?
Here.
Counselor Blaylock?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
All right, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. I just want to state before we do, I've been thanking everyone that's come and respected the roles of this chamber of the city of Portsmouth. We are really close by the numbers of being through with this. And I understand that with, with this phase of the pandemic, and I get as we are getting closer, it is harder, but I appreciate everyone's patience and perseverance as we make it through to brighter days. So with that, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up, acceptance of minutes for the December 20th, January 3rd, January 13th, and January 24th. I await a motion to move to accept those.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next is the recognition and volunteer community reports. We have a proclamation, and that is right here, recognition of Black History Month. A proclamation, whereas the celebration of Black History in America was created by Dr. Carter G. Woodson in 1926 as a week-long commemoration that has become Black History Month, Dr. Woodson chose the second week in February because it contained the birthdays of two major influences in Black life at the time, Abraham Lincoln, February 12th, and Frederick Douglass, February 14th. And whereas February is observed throughout the nation as Black History Month with special programs and events, and whereas the stories of African and African-American residents are woven deep in the fabric that is Portsmouth since the first African was brought here in 1645 through those who were buried in the African burying ground in the 1700s and 1800s and through to the robust African-American community of today, and whereas on June 15th, 2020, the Portsmouth City Council passed a resolution which declared Portsmouth to be a racial justice municipality, and whereas we stand proudly with the Seacoast NAACP, the Seacoast African-American Cultural Center, the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire, and many others who celebrate the deep history of Africans and African-Americans in Portsmouth, and whereas we are resolved to affirm the city's commitment to hosting resources, providing helpful pathways to additional resources, alerting employees, boards, commission members to training opportunities, identifying ways to advance dialogues with stakeholders for racial justice. Now therefore, I, Deglin McCaffrey, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council and the citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 in Portsmouth, New Hampshire as Black History Month, and urge all citizens to improve our record of equity and inclusion and be welcoming of diversity throughout our community, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this seventh day of February 2022. And with that, I will open up public comment session. Now, if everyone on Zoom could please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, we're going to cut hands on that by 7:10. We will start with those who have signed up. And first up is the former mayor, Rick Bledsted. Please come up, state your name and address, and the topic is simple request.
Good evening, Rick Bledsted, 1395 Isling Street. I would say it would be a simple request. I had a journey like, I guess, most people never really had before, living eight years, learning the process, learning the rules, learning the regulations. And as I got into office for my first term, and I started to ask a lot of questions, couldn't do this, couldn't do that, there were certain things that were there, but I followed them to the best of the ability. And then last year, I should say the last term and the last council, every time I went to go and do something, I was met with challenges, couldn't do this and couldn't do that, had to abide by certain rules and regulations. I have a simple request that this council adopt basically the same principles that the last council was, and I'll give you two examples, one of them being, so I found out in January, before our first meeting on the 21st, that I needed to have this, my council vote on the appointments that you went and read to the record two weeks ago at your last city council meeting, all of your representatives on each one of the commissions. So it's been done time and time again. I did it for two, I did it for the better part with two years, and two years experienced before that, and I was told that the council needed to adopt it, needed to be voted on. Put it on the agenda, and we voted on it. I had two appointments, both at the HCC level and the planning board level, that were told by staff and basically formed by Attorney Sullivan that this was a requirement. Actually, if you look in your ordinances on the planning board, it actually says the representative from the planning board from the council needs to be solidified. It shall be voted on by the council. It says it in the ordinance. It was an argument that was made with me early on in my first term as mayor. So that would be one request. I would request that this council, maybe even tonight, even though there isn't a motion on the agenda, which is something else I got called out from, from time to time, would be a simple request that this council would adopt some of the same standards that were put upon my council. And then I'm glad to see that everybody is here tonight and nobody is on by Zoom, but I was a little taken back when Counselor Bagley, who travels for work, had, could not attend, and you had meetings before that where you couldn't. It has to be done by a roll call vote when you don't have somebody present. This is a request and a requirement that has been standard for years. I remember time and time again, all the years I put in at Chris Dwyer, actually would have to phone in because she would travel, and after every time when she was on that phone, this is pre-COVID, you had to do a roll call. These are two requests that I'm simply asking the council to partake in, to be able to go and abide by them. These are rules that were made up just for me or anyone else. It's a standard principle that I was told to guide by, and I'm asking this council to do the same thing. That's it. I hope you all have a pleasant evening, a quick meeting, and hopefully we won't have to have these on too much longer so we can look each other in the face. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Next up, we have Kevin Dwyer, the topic of outdoor dining.
How's it going? My name is Kevin Dwyer. I live at 461 Middle Street in Portsmouth. I'm a Portsmouth resident who grew up in town, went to Little Harbor, graduated from high school, now I own Dwyer's Pub on Bridge Street in Portsmouth. I want to express my gratitude to the city for their support and accommodations to help the restaurant community survive during the pandemic since it began. If it were not for outdoor dining, I absolutely would have lost my business, which I opened three months prior to the shutdown. And the effects COVID has had on my business are still present, and I would like to ask the council to explore continuing outdoor dining going forward. The support for the program that I hear from Portsmouth residents and customers is overwhelming, and furthermore, I would like to ask the council to explore establishing a more long-term protocol for the program. Speaking on behalf of myself and many other restaurant owners, we would love the opportunity to work with the city to find terms that make sense for the city, the business community, and the public as well. The more long-term we can plan for, the more creative we can get outside, and more comfortable we would be spending money on outdoor dining. I feel it would help push Portsmouth in the direction that we've been on throughout my lifetime certainly, and, you know, we're known for being a vibrant community and would love the opportunity to continue that tradition with outdoor dining. And I have reached out to several other municipalities in New England about what their protocols are. Some of them have more of a history than we do, so I figure why reinvent the wheel. It's definitely worth talking to, especially Portland, in terms of what they do, as a way to base off of it. Again, thank you for everything you guys have done, especially Health Department, DPW. It's been very impactful to my business, so thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up, we have Esther, our former counselor, Esther Kennedy.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. First of all, welcome to your second official meeting. And tonight you have a cemetery committee, people coming forward to be put on the committee. I hope you vote for all of them and move them forward. They're a good group of people, they have a lot of energy, and they're doing a great job already. As you know, they went from a blue-ribbon committee to now an official city committee. As far as outdoor dining, I would request that you do your homework. When we had outdoor dining, when I said on council, we have a lot of little tiny storefronts that are not restaurants, that are not coffee shops, that are not food purveyors, that really feel that they are forgotten. So I would encourage you to listen to those individuals. I know you got some emails, I know I received some emails on it, so I would ask that you can, you think about that and do some research before you make your decision. I would also like to have you do some research. The city manager has asked you to look at going outside of a contract. The firemen are great people, I would support them 110%. I believe that all the contracts probably need to be looked at, given the pay, pay competition, the rate competition in our world today. As a public school administrator, I'm there with you, but I don't think you want to be the council that set the precedent that went outside of the contract and did it without really looking at the contract. If there's a problem, open up the contract. There are people that have been working in this that will not get the same benefit because they're in that contract. So I would encourage you to open up the contract and do it right. Lastly, face mask, I want you to think about the children of our school. I understand that we have a community that appreciates face masks, that wants face masks, but I also know that I've run a school for now a year, and I've been fully in a school for two years of 1,600 kids, and for this past year, we have not had a face mask rule. And I don't have the mental health issues that a lot of school districts do in our community. I don't have the regression in education because we've been full in, we didn't do hybrid like Portsmouth did. If it was a choice of my community, I'd get that. But I would encourage you, as we move forward and as you do your research for looking at face masks, if you really think about the children of our community, remember, this group of seniors, they were freshmen the last time we had what we consider typical school day. So I ask you, if you feel because you're getting pressure from the community to keep this going a little bit, think about our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Next up, we have a Sam Kenny, speaking on the mask mandate.
Hi.
Sam, can I just stop you? Do you mind putting on a mask?
I don't have a mask, and in your mandate, anxiety of a mask is an exemption, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. A lot of people are-
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt you again, but could you please state your address?
Yep, so my address is Seven Pond Path, North Hampton. I just moved away from 90 Brewery Lane. I work in Portsmouth, lived here for 30 years.
Okay, Sam, I'm gonna have to ask you to sit down. We'll, we'll get right back to you, there's only two more people, and then we'll have to get her to come back up.
That's fine, thank you very much.
Oh, we got two on Zoom, okay. Next up is Carly Galante, mask mandate.
Name and address, right?
It is, yep.
Carly Galante, 555, can't see, sorry, Sagamore Ave. Okay. I would like to start to reference the Health Officials Directive because that is what led us to the mandate. Kim was able to make this decision legally because of this, the State of New Hampshire Amendment to Declaration of Public Health Incident to Respond to Coronavirus Disease in New Hampshire. This was signed by the governor, and it allows Kim to make decisions for COVID-19 without counsel, disciplinary, or civil actions until March 31st, 2022. Interesting enough, the Portsmouth mask mandate is set to end April 1st, the following day. The duties of the health officers under communicable diseases and any civil misdemeanor that would be enforceable only apply to states of emergencies which New Hampshire is no longer in, and the governor has made it clear that we will not be in one for COVID-19 again. Police can only be used during a state of emergency, and bylaws don't apply to illness, which is why this could not be used. You find RSA 147 under the Guide to District Court Enforcement of Local Ordinances and Codes Under Town Health Regulations, which directly applies to this mandate. Section C's Prosecution Procedure under RSA 147 states, ill persons willfully violating such regulations shall be guilty of a violation. No special procedure is called for. Thus, the prosecuting official can use the form and procedures normally utilized in the district court for violations of state law, meaning a person would have to know they are sick with COVID and is inside a public place, and the health official would have to prove that they are sick to be given a violation that only the health official can give. The person or business can appeal the violation because it is not a state law to wear a mask, and the violation gets dropped. By New Hampshire state law, you are not required to give your ID to the health official if asked, and they can't write a violation without it, nor are you required to state your current or past medical history under HIPAA law. So whether you vote yes or no on the mask mandate continuing, it has no enforceable legal standing. Therefore, the directive and mandate and everything on it does not need compliance from people or businesses. I find it disrespectful that the people responsible and involved in the mandate and directive knowingly and willingly are misleading the citizens of Portsmouth by citing RSA 147 without informing them of Section C's prosecution procedure. And equally disturbing, this information was not shared with the council members when you repeatedly asked in the first hearing on this matter. I urge you to seriously consider what I've had to say here today. I've been able to answer your basic questions that others have not been able to answer for you in the first hearing, and if you would like to see any of my resources from newhampshire.gov's legal section, I'm happy to hand those over to you. And for those reasons, regardless of your vote, people and businesses do not have to comply, so I urge you to just end it.
Thank you, Carly. Next up, we have Sean Maloney on the mask mandate.
Hello again, my name is Sean Maloney. I spoke to you at the last meeting. I live at 570 Union Street, born and raised here. Again, I worked in a COVID hospital, Presbyterian Columbia, New York City during 2020. I've had personally over 100 COVID patients, so speaking from a little bit of experience here. I'm once again asking you to repeal the mask mandate. The fact is, is most places aren't enforcing it. If this were a restaurant, we all could have walked in, sat down, and everyone could be maskless right now, and that's, like, if you think about it, does that make any sense at all? Like, what's the point? A lot of people are still wearing cloth masks, which, as recently said by the CDC, literally do nothing. And I know the numbers mean a lot, so are the numbers up or are the numbers down? If they're up, it means masks didn't do anything. If they're down, are they down because of masks? Are they down because this time every year, the end-of-the-year flu season that hits very hard here, is it just tapering off like it does every year? We have an older populace and a harsh winter, flu season hits us hard every time, and my question is, are we going to play this game with every flu season and every new variant? Because you know there's going to be more coming. It's way too lucrative, there's going to be more variants, and nobody wants to play this game anymore. We spent over 700 days keeping people inside, wearing masks. Your immune system is like a computer. If you don't keep it up to date, it's going to be not good when you turn it back on again, which is what we saw when people finally came out of hiding and took their masks off. They got hit really hard, especially in our climate. Questions about the numbers are, are all the people in the hospital, are they all there for COVID, or are they there for something else that happened to test positive for COVID? Because we're testing for literally everything, because across the country, roughly half the people are in the hospital for COVID, we're there for something else when they first got there. Please stop this sham, we're 700 days into two weeks to flatten the curve. Let each business and individual decide, because most already aren't enforcing it, and most people are just going to Newington or Hampton to avoid Portsmouth at this point. Please let adults make their own decisions. That's all I'm really asking, just as before. I have two studies, one conducted by the CDC, one conducted by a European country here. Again, there's obviously studies upon studies you could possibly ask for. I apologize, I only printed nine, but it's for your reading material, if I'm allowed to approach, but after that, I have nothing to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. You can bring them up, and thank you again for your service.
Mr. Mayor, can I bring up the legal stuff that I talked about?
Sure. We have two on Zoom, and then we'll go back to Sam.
First up, Mayor, we have Robin Russo. Go ahead, Robin. Please give us your address.
90 Fleet Street. Number one, I understand you're talking about resident permit parking today. You should not be extending the pilot program, you should be expanding the pilot program. Some of us have been waiting over 25 years for resident permit parking, especially in Market Square. Number two is the issue of parking placards. People with walking disabilities have handicap placards. I want people with handicap placards to take note of Section 265:74 state law, and that basically says you have free parking. And if a city chooses to have time limits on handicap placards, it needs to be in accordance with the New Hampshire- it needs to be in accordance with the New Hampshire, the Governor's Commission on Disabilities, which says that the time limits will be double any space in the city if they choose to have time limits. So if you're in a three-hour parking area, it should be six hours for people with handicap placards. I met with them. Currently, the city of Portsmouth is not in compliance with state law on that, and I'm encouraging others with handicap placards to ask for refunds on all of the tickets people received when it was snuck in back in October, that they are limited to the, whatever the time zone is, three-hour zone, three hours. That's not according to state law, and these people are entitled to refunds. And you need to change that as well, the ordinance. Update that ordinance to be in accordance with state law, because we were told that the change had to happen to be in accordance with state law. That was a lie, and I met with the director of the Governor's Commission on Disabilities, and they agree. Also, members of the public, take note of Ordinance 7.103A. That involves the Traffic and Safety Commission, or committee that I stepped into this week. I noticed that we had members of city management voting and making motions at the table. This is a subcommittee of the city council. Never should members and employees of the government be on these committees. I called every major city in the state of New Hampshire. Not one of them has city employees on any of these boards. Subcommittees essentially of the city council. They were outraged, actually, when I told them about Portsmouth. So we need to change that ordinance. Somewhere along the line, some management team voted this in. We need to get that changed and put people, members of the public, on these city boards. Also, they meet very early in the morning, so you can't attend at 8:00 a.m. Now, they discussed at the table about changing their time, but it's still not accommodating the public. It's accommodating their own schedule. City employees' schedule, members of the board's schedule, but not we the people's schedule. Those boards are for we the people, not for the management of our city and not for the members of the board, when it's convenient for them. These boards should meet when it's convenient to we the people, the public, which most people can't get out of work, like Andrew Bagley. He says, "Oh, I get time off."
Thank you, Robin.
"I can attend." Most can't, okay? So most people have to attend after business hours or in weekends. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Shelley Saunders. Go ahead, Shelley. Please give us your address.
Okay, thank you. Shelley Saunders, 15 Oak Street. And I want to address the citywide mask mandate. Quickly, I want to urge you to end the citywide face-covering mandate. Portsmouth is on the opposite side of history here. We have states like New Jersey, Illinois, and now Connecticut just today, eliminating all mask mandates in the cities and in their schools today. Mask mandates in schools are going to be dropping, and I urge you to decline the motion to move this mask mandate to a second reading tonight. I urge you to remember what Carly said and Sean Maloney. I support everything they said. And I urge you to remember what the definition of insanity is. It's doing the same thing over and over and expecting something different. This mask mandate is not working. No one's listening to it. We're over it. So I urge Portsmouth to get on the right side here of history. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for-
Sam is back, yeah.
Sam.
Sam Kenny. Once again, I just recently moved out of Portsmouth from 90 Brewery Lane. I now live in Northampton. I wanted to bring up the mask mandate because a lot of people are worried local governments are politicizing science. What studies are you using to further enforce your COVID-19 mandates? Being more specific, what references can you share regarding COVID? Peer-reviewed control group studies that other countries, our country, we have many top universities, Johns Hopkins, which is one that I'm going to bring to your attention. There's hundreds more, and I urge you to do the research. They reveal masks have no broad-based evidence of noticeable effects on COVID-19 mortality. It's government malfeasance to mandate a mask and not leave it up to people's individual health choices. You've been doing it on and off for two years. It's not constitutional, my opinion, it's tyrannical. This has negatively impacted us as a society, further distancing us from our neighbors, friends, family, not to mention our economy. Will you take the blame for the wrongdoings of your overreach? Or will you shift your blame to avoid scrutiny? We need some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And with that, I will close the public comment. Well, we'll move on to the, no, public dialogue tonight. Public hearings and/or resolutions. The first is the capital improvement plan. We have a presentation that was held at a work session. Next, I'll open up to city council questions. Councilor Bagley.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I would, after hearing from numerous residents this weekend about the Elwin Park Traffic Calming and Sidewalk project, which I believe are for fiscal '24 and fiscal '25, I did kind of a deep dive into the planning that's been done, the community outreach that's been done. It seems like there's over 70% support for this project in the community. It seems to comply with our 2014 Safe Roots Plan. So I'd like to know, would it be possible to move this up one year? And is there some logistical reasons why we would not be able to do that?
Sure. I'll let the city manager, I would say it's probably, you know, the allocation of funding and our resources that go into that. The city manager, would you mind answering that?
Sure, happy to answer that, Your Honor and Councilor Bagley. If we were to move up the items you were speaking of, and if you referenced it, forgive me, I'll read it again for folks following. It's TSM 17-P-L-59. And the impact of moving that up a year would impact the FY '23 general fund, or capital outlays, by $160,000 and would bring a $1.5 million bond into FY '24. So as has been the case in previous CIP deliberations, the idea could be that the council could discuss it at this time as part of a public hearing, listen to public comment, and then consider making amendments to the CIP either tonight or at the March 7 meeting where we would look to adopt. So there is... Peter Rice is here to answer questions. What I can tell you, there's been debate and dispute about, well, not dispute, that sounds like a negative word. There's been different sides to the issue of folks wanting sidewalks and not wanting sidewalks. So those are the numbers, and that's how they would impact this year's and next year's CIP. So I'll wait for further questions or happy to bring up staff as may be required.
Councilor Bagley.
So I guess a further question, just a clarification. Is it primarily a financial issue or is it also a manpower, resources issue? I understand we have lots of projects going on in the city. If we were to move it up, would we have the manpower to do that, I guess?
I think we've exhausted both Karen and myself's ability to answer these questions.
I'll take a stab while Peter comes down, but the consultants would be of concern in the sense we'd want to make sure where we were, vis-à-vis their ability to work with us. I just don't know that the public input has been something that has been defined. I know there's been back and forth, and Peter's here now.
Good evening. Peter Rice, Director of Public Works, Mr. Mayor, City Council. From a manpower standpoint, yes, it would be challenging for us to be able to have staff to do that. But as the manager indicated, we would most likely have a consultant work with us on this. The two staff members that previously were working on this project, both are not, have left the city's employment. So we would need to kind of get back up to speed in terms of the status of it. I did participate in public meetings. That there wasn't a consensus in terms of the direction the project was gonna go in. At this point, we would like to probably regroup and gain consensus in terms of where the sidewalks would go. There is existing money for traffic calming in Elwin Park, up to $90,000 that's available to move this project forward, or this portion of the project forward. So I guess I would recommend that we utilize the existing funds at this point to get a consensus and a design started. And then the monies would be available next year to do the final design. If the desire is to move it forward more quickly, one thing you could do is you could combine the general funded portion with the bond. So instead of a $1.5 million bond, you could do a $1.65 million bond, and the existing monies would cover to keep the project going. And then you'd still be able to accomplish moving the funding forward, but not impacting this year's budget.
I have a follow-up. So part of doing the research into this, I noticed that the other half of Elwin Park is up for repaving. Is there any risk that the repaving would either be delayed or we would be doing the same work twice if we did decide to proceed with sidewalks in the future? Or are those two projects gonna happen congruently?
There would be potentially some stranded investment. It would entail some of the pavement if we were to... If we were to build all the sidewalk in grassy areas, there would be less of an impact. However, the right-of-way, we believe, is wide enough to be able to accommodate sidewalks. What we were planning on doing was holding off on Harding and McKinley for final paving and doing the side streets. There seemed to be some agreement that those main thoroughfares were appropriate to have sidewalks on. So we weren't gonna pave those areas and hold off until there was consensus and be able to do the design, at least to a level that we could show people what the impacts to the roadway would look like. There did not seem to be desire to have sidewalks on the side streets in that area. So we felt comfortable that we could go forward with the surface paving on those streets that are off those main lines without running the risk of stranding some investment.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions before we open it up? Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and city manager, I guess. Is there a plan to have a separate work session on the police, new police facility? I ask this because I have many questions on that proposed project, and I suspect a lot of councilors also have similar questions.
Yeah, I think the short answer is yes. I don't believe... Has it been scheduled yet?
It has not been scheduled. We'd be happy to work with the mayor and your schedule to make that happen.
Yeah, why don't we, yeah, we'll get that scheduled before March 7. And we do have a meeting after that if we can't adopt it by then. But I'd like to get that meeting, you know, before March 7. So let's get that out and get that noticed. Thank you, Councilor Cook. Councilor Bullock.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I guess the question for city manager. I noticed we have plans for the skateboard park in the CIP. I believe we also have it in the budget as well for FY '23. Could you just explain to us how that would work, or where it would go, if we were to, you know, go forward with that?
Sure. So to recap, the previous council took a vote to allow $2.2 million in a supplemental appropriation. And at that time, the planning board had already noticed and placed in the CIP the placeholder of $200,000 in cash for design in FY '23 and bonding in the out years for the project. And it would be up to this council to decide the ultimate disposition of the funding for the skate park. So essentially, you have options.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bullock. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Public hearing? No. So we will open up the public hearing. Anyone asking to come forth, speak? You're not limited to three minutes. I'd like to ask you to keep that mental number in your head, though, as you speak, but we were not gonna cut you off if you go past it. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, city council member, city manager, and city staff. I'm Sean Siefer, and I live at 2 Nixon Park in Portsmouth. I'm here today to speak in support of the Elwin Park Traffic Calming and Pedestrian Improvement Plan in the CIP process. I've been following this plan for a number of years now. So I was surprised a couple of weeks ago to notice that the budget that was originally forecast for fiscal year 2023 was moved and pushed out to begin in 2024. I would like to better understand why this occurred, and we kind of just went through some of those points. Regardless, I'd like to express why I support this project to you now. It's all about improving the safety for the students who walk to Don Darrow and the students waiting for the buses within the neighborhood, for the middle school and the high school. These safety ideas were first introduced in the 2010 Safe Roots to School Action Plan. There have been neighborhood meetings as well, and a 2019 survey took each interest. The survey results show strong support for moving this project forward. In fact, at 77%, 70% of the respondents said motor vehicle speed was the highest ranked concern relating to traffic safety in Elwin Park. Specific to the sidewalks, which is certainly the hot issue, 67% of respondents fear adding sidewalks to some of the streets, with an additional 13% with qualified support. That's nearly 80%, or 156 of the 196 responses. Moving forward, I ask this project to receive the attention of city staff to engage the neighborhood on the recommendations of the 2020 proposal. There was a proposal that's in the CIP that shows where the sidewalks would be placed, highlighting the McKinley Road and the beginning of Harding Road. Let's learn from the mistakes of previous projects to make this a success and improve the safety within the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, former Councilor Huda.
I'm here tonight to speak on the CIP, and I'm...
Can we just get your addresses for the record?
280 South Street.
Thank you.
I'm here as a taxpayer tonight, and I'd like to request that the council ask for more information on the following. First thing I'd like to talk to you about is the... I'm gonna talk to you about the section of building and infrastructure. And there's six lines in there that I think relate to each other, that I personally would like more information as a taxpayer. And in follow-up to Councilor Cook's question, this would be something to definitely discuss if you went and discussed this later. The six lines that I'm gonna ask you to get more information on are the new police facility, the police facility study that was authorized last year, the police facility deficiencies and repair project, the city hall HVAC improvements, the citywide facilities capital improvements, and the city fuel station upgrades. Brand new, surprise. The first thing I'd like to call to your attention is, last year, my experience, we authorized for the police station 1.2 million for a study. I would like to know the status of this study. What we have found out from this study, has the previous study been updated? And what did it tell us? Last year, also, the amount that was in the CIP based on not having a study was $39.2 million. We still don't have a study. I don't know what the status of the request is, but in the new FY '23, we have $40,600,000. To Councilor Taber's point last time, if the study tells us we need that, fine. But as a taxpayer, I would like to know what the study said before we move forward. as a taxpayer, I would like to know what the study said before we move forward. The next thing that's in there has been in there for a while, and it's the deficiency study, or the deficiencies for the mold remediation. Now, when we first came in, this was in there. We authorized money to get rid of this. We were told that they were working on it in six months. They had done summer mediation. Another six months, it came back. The prior council had put in four-hundred-thousand dollars for mold remediation, and this was put in for FY22, 23, 24, 25, and 26, at which time, in FY26, the city hall HVAC improvements were put in there for one-point-five million. Now, last year, when this was discussed, the cause, the root cause of the deficiencies and the mold remediation, we were told was the old piping in the building. So my question is, should we, as taxpayers, keep funding this for mold remediation, or is it better to move the HVAC system upgrade up and not spend two million dollars to keep putting a Band-Aid on this when we could fix it? The next thing I would like to call to your attention is, in citywide capital facilities improvements, there's a million dollars. There's a million dollars in there just about... For last year, it was in 23, and then it's again in 26. In this FY23 plan, we have a million dollars in there, and then it goes up and down between a half a million. Could some of that be used for... Switched to the HVAC system, which would remediate the mold issue? Or is that something we can't do? The last thing I would like to call to your attention is this brand-new item in here of a city fuel station. I had gone back through all the reports. This was not in last year. It came in in FY22, and it's in there to be bonded this year. I would ask you to look at the HVAC system first and save the taxpayers two million dollars instead of doing the remediation and put the new system in on that. The next thing I would like to ask... If anybody noticed, the P's wastewater treatment facility amounts. For last year, we had a million-five in the CIP for FY22, and then we had twelve million in there for FY24, for a total of thirteen-point-five million. In FY23, we've got three-point-five-five in 23, and we have forty-nine-point-five million in there for 24. That's a jump, and I guess I would like to know where that came from, and what it includes, and how we got there, because it wasn't anywhere else, and it wasn't discussed with the prior council. The other thing I'd like to know is for this council to get an idea of where all of the projects that were started last year are now. And specifically, I'm looking at Islington Street. The prior council went through the funding and the process for Phase 1B and insisted on the funding of Phase 2. The monies went out to be bonded, and my question to you is, how can you fund this year when you don't know where the project is or finished up, is going to finish up, last year? So what I'm asking from the staff is, can you please provide the ending statuses of the projects last year, so this council will know what they need to fund for next year? And when I talk last year, I'm talking FY22. When I'm talking this year, I'm talking your new year of FY23. The other thing I would like to ask is for the schedule to be improved. I'm having a hard time tracing projects that were on there last year that were funded and bonded, and the example of that would be the Hanover Facility parking garage. Last year, it was in there for six-point-three million. It was funded through a resolution. This year, it does not appear on your CIP schedule, unless I didn't get an updated one. The money for that should be on your schedule, because that was supposed to be done, my understanding, that was supposed to be done over three years. And the other thing I want to know is, what is the status of that right now? Have we started that? Have we spent any money? What is the status, and how much does this council need to allocate to this project and know where it is? And how much can I, as a taxpayer, expect to spend on this in the next year? The last thing, I guess, I know you've got a request from a different taxpayer on a bunch of listings of projects and how the reports were put together, and I'd just like to follow up on that, because I personally was having a hard time following the flow from last year to this year on the CIP and matching that with the bonding and the money that was spent on these projects. So, I mean, the suggestion that came to all of you was for the CIP to be revised with upgrades, with a list of all the projects that are new for this year, a list of all the projects that were in last year's CIP and not in this year's because they were completed or dropped. Example is the Hanover Garage. But where is it? It was in last year. Did we start our first third or not? That would be really helpful for everybody else as a taxpayer to know where we are in the project and in the funding. The next one would be list all projects from last year's that were not completed or started. That means you asked the taxpayers for the money, we bonded it, and the money's still sitting there because we haven't started the project yet. That could be the case for Islington Street, I don't know. But I think the taxpayers should know where the money is that we bonded. We bonded out thirty-point-five million last year. Where is that now? Is it on certain projects that were told to the council and the residents, or is it sitting in a money market account till everything gets started? The next one would be if any uncompleted or unstarted projects are carried forward, and the funding changes, provide an explanation why. That would be great for everybody as a taxpayer also. Those are my questions, and I'm hoping that if you discuss all of this with, as Counselor Cook requested, that you'll get back to the taxpayers and let us know the status of all of these. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for the public hearing on the CIP? Former Counselor Kennedy?
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. I noticed in the CIP, which is always there, for the cemetery committee, it's twenty-five-thousand a year. The cemetery committee is trying to... Because it was not around for a long time, there's a lot of makeup and a lot of things that need to happen. There needs to be a study of our cemeteries for the committee to move forward and work on their work. I would ask that the council add a hundred-and-fifty thousand to that, to have a total of a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, to have a study for the cemetery committees. So I would hope someone would add that to the CIP. I wouldn't see it every year. I'd see it as a one-time thing for this upcoming fiscal year. The other thing, one of the things that, at the end, we were dealing with was a turf field question. There's no thing in the CIP, there's something that has to be dealt with with that field. So to protect yourselves and the community, I would hope that you would have a conversation, learn your information, gather the information on it, and make sure you have some kind of money in the CIP if that field has to be pulled up, or if it has to be fixed or altered in any way. So I would encourage you to do that. There is water going across the Great Bay that is being replaced. There's a water line. I have asked twice, there's two water lines right now going across the bay to bring our water. It's all the water that comes from Madbury. It's most of the water that we use in our community. They, in the city, was thinking of doing one water line. I would encourage you to research, get your understanding, see where we are in that project. I would continue to suggest, as I had as a counselor, that we do two water lines. Knowing a little bit about the harbor, a little bit about the currents, a little bit about shifts in water lines and weights and everything, I would caution and ask you to reconsider that and do two water lines for safety. One is a backup, and one that's our primary source of water, and I think it's pertinent that we make sure we're safe. It was replaced, I want to believe, in the forties and the fifties, the first time, with two lines. Other than that, I'll be late to hear. There was a comment made, we were watching it on TV, of your first-time introduction from the CIP, saying that there was no public here. And there was no public here because we were just getting the information too that night. We had just gotten the information. But also, I think it's important for the council to devour the information, take it in, research it, figure out, especially as a new council, figure out what your beliefs are, what your constituents' beliefs are, and then give us input, and then have a community comment on that input. So there were some comments made, but no one was hearing. I want you to know, we were watching. We were concerned. However, that wasn't the time to come and comment. Tonight was, because now you've had it for two weeks yourselves, and hopefully you've researched and done some work on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Esther.
I see you again. City Council. My name's Dave Cosgrove. I live at 174 Echo Ave, here in town. The last time I was here before you was December 20th, and it was an exciting evening in which the recreational facility, AKA skate park, was approved, not by a five-to-four vote, not by a two-thirds vote, by a unanimous nine-to-zero vote. And as part of that motion that was approved, it's my understanding that the park was going to be funded via unassigned fund balance. So at this point, I'm seeking clarification. I'm a bit confused as to why this facility is listed in the proposed capital budget. It's not an approved budget, it's a proposed budget, when we've in fact already approved this project and already approved the funding. So, you know, I know I'm not alone, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but I've heard from a number of folks that do have concerns about, you know, how this might affect the actual implementation of the project, if at all. If it doesn't, you know, I appreciate that the city might choose to fund a different way. I'd just like to know going forward, I've heard mixed things. It's in the project, it's in the CIP, it's not in the CIP. Just would like some clarification. Thank you.
Let's take second-time speakers.
Can I? Good evening again. I'm sorry, I forgot something. The other thing that I would like information on is the outdoor pool. In the prior-year budget, we had two-point-five in there for a new pool house. In FY23, we've got that changed to two million for aquatics upgrades. So my question is, what are aquatic upgrades? And last year, it cost the taxpayers, I think we put in five-hundred-thousand in the bonding to get the pool up to opening, because it was so important at the end of COVID. So that happened, and nothing was done with the pool house. So my question is, what more for two million dollars needs to be done to this pool to get it up to snuff or up to what we think we need? And going back and looking at the funding that has been put into the pool, in FY19, we put in a million, in FY21, we put in two million. Now we're asking for another two million. So the question that I'd like to get answered as a taxpayer is, what does this two million involve? And since you moved the actual pool out, when will that be looked at again? Because as I recall, last year, we had a passionate representative, Kelly Pitts, here, and she was very interested in what would happen with this pool and the pool house also. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Amy May Court. I live at 47 Taft Road. My question is the same as Dave Cosgrove's, but I also want to thank Counselor Bagley for your questions about Elwin Park. I can assure you that my neighbors and I are very concerned about safety in our neighborhood, and it's my understanding that it keeps getting pushed back. So it would be great to see it maybe this year or move forward in some way. And I'm not going to pretend to know anything about financials, but it seems to me that if the skate park, the two-hundred-thousand dollars isn't in the skate park, the CIP for the skate park, maybe it could go to that. I know it's not that easy, but just thought I'd bring that up. So thank you, Counselor Bagley, and thank you to my neighbor over here.
Good evening again. Rick Beckstead, 1395 Islington Street. I guess it's more of a request, but I mean, when it comes to the CIP, whether this would be something... So about a year ago, when Counselor McEckern and Counselor Tabor, I'm sorry, Mayor McEckern and Counselor Tabor had gone and experienced something where we had a close-to-a-fatality in order to be able to get something done, and those were with the single crosswalks. And we were able to pull one at the end of Essex, and that's how I started my career. Eight years ago, from that date literally, we had some close calls. We had people that walked there to school. There had been a lot of close calls, and it wasn't until we actually had a resident get hit in order to be able to go and do that. So this has become a huge asset to the community. This is something that I advocated for. Peter Rice would definitely, I think, still advocate for me really going and pushing, and we have made big strides in that. I'm noticing that more and more streets, as we're doing them, we're including them in each one of them, but some of them are not going to get done for a period of time. So I'm looking for a simple request, and it was a promise that I was made by a couple of residents of Betty's Dream. And if people know where Betty's Dream is, it's a wheelchair community that sits on Woodlawn Circle, and the route that they used to take was to actually go up that hill onto Woodbury Avenue, and there's a crosswalk that's there. I remember personally years back where I actually took two times where I stopped my truck, I stopped traffic, for that gentleman to be able to cross that street. So as I was talking at National Night Out, I got to meet several of those people from that community. They don't take that route anymore. I mean, we made big strides when we closed Echo. Echo is a much safer place. Mr. Cosgrove back there will go and contest to that. So Hillcrest is actually one of those streets now that is one of the most pleasant streets you'll ever see. I mean, even as close as they are in the vicinity of Route 16, it is a neighborhood that is peaceful, quiet, and people really enjoy out there, and they have no sidewalks out there, but I just wanted to go and point that out. But anyway, so what this community actually does is, from Betty's Dream, is they actually go up that road onto Echo, and they try to cross from there. And once again, they can't cross. And somebody in a wheelchair, if you've ever seen it, it's a last-sight-unseen kind of a thing, where they usually get overlooked. So, and I know Eric Eby isn't here anymore, and I know Eric Eby was trying to look into that when we originally did the Woodbury Road over years ago. They had implemented that, but when it came down to funding, so they're roughly about thirty-thousand dollars apiece. I think it's definitely something that should be looked at. I'm just saying it because it's the CIP for this one-time expenditure, but I think that we should be doing something where we could do, say, maybe three a year, at a certain request, still going through the process, maybe with parking, traffic, and safety or something like that, but this is a group of residents that have a really hard time. And I'm in hopes that we can go and finally, after literally almost nine years of requesting that, that we can go and implement this. This is something that was kind of overlooked over the many years. Financial is usually the issue, but I think thirty-thousand dollars isn't a large request, so I would just request that the council maybe take a look at that for this project. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other additional speakers? All right, with that, we will close the public hearing. Are there any additional council questions? Counselor Dunham?
Your Honor, I'd like to go ahead and ask Mr. Cosgrove's overall question, if the funding for the skate park, being the CIP versus what was previously done, impacts the skate park happening?
I can say it does not impact the path...
So, the question remains, do those funds come from the supplemental appropriation that was approved using fund balance, or does it come in FY '23 through capital outlay of CIP? That would be the decision of this council.
Thank you.
Counselor Cook.
Is there any different impact on taxpayers if the funds come out of the CIP and are bonded ultimately than if they come out of the general fund balance?
I guess I'll answer by saying it's a really complex question. And what finance has done through the years and the decades, and what they would do with this particular project, is give the advice to the council on the best way to support moving a project forward. And so, there are two schools of thought. And so, I don't know that we want to put Judy on the spot tonight, but we, there are pros and cons to doing both. The fact that the design money is in the CIP to the $200,000 was our recommend, was a staff recommendation, and certainly the previous council is, was interested in supporting the larger amount at, for the, with the supplemental appropriation. What that doesn't do is allow us to move any faster. So, we can talk about the pros and cons, but the staff recommendation was to use capital outlay through that '23 CIP to advance the design in this coming fiscal year.
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor.
Counselor Bagley.
I have a couple of questions, but I guess I'll make a comment maybe for those at home and for my own benefit. The way I looked at it and the way it was explained to me about skate park is, we have two buckets of money. As soon as we have a chance to spend, we're going to pick whatever bucket makes the most sense, and we have both those options available to us. Would that be a fairly accurate way to say it?
That would.
So, a comment on the former mayor, Rick Beckstead. I'm on the Parking, Traffic, and Safety Committee. I agree with you that the more we can do to make things safe, especially for places like Betty Dreams, the better. If you could send an email with the intersection that you want, because I'm looking at the map, and I think it's Woodlawn Circle and Woodbury, or maybe it's Maplewood and Woodbury, I'm not entirely sure, what we can then do is get a report back at the Parking, Traffic, and Safety Committee meeting. It probably won't be till April or May, because there's not many pedestrians in the winter months, but I would use this opportunity to also say to anybody out in the public, if there is an intersection that you feel can be benefit from this, you know, that's the best way to make a request, because then it can get at least into the queue. I can't say that it will happen. There may be various reasons, engineering-wise or whatever, that it can't happen, but if it gets into the queue, that's the most important thing. So, anything we can do to get those things in the queue. I did ask at the Budget Work Session, and I believe there's up to $300,000 available for things like this, so there is funding in the CIP if we identify places where we could put these flashing beacons. The tricky part is, I would say every resident that crosses the street anywhere would think they would, they would be benefit to have them. We have to be a little bit judicious in where we put them, because if you have too many out there, they just kind of get lost in the noise. So, we want to pick the best, most impactful places to put them, and that certainly sounds like it's a good candidate. And, Your Honor, if I can continue on a second question?
Yep.
So, just jumping back to the sidewalks in Elwin Park. Took a pretty deep dive into the studies, the, there isn't 100% consensus, but like the gentleman who spoke earlier said, you know, it was 60-something percent, and then it got up to almost 80% for some sidewalks, not obviously on every street in Elwin Park, but on some of the major streets, especially going to the school. My daughter was lucky enough to go to Little Harbor, and where we walked to Little Harbor, we had sidewalks. And the community that you build, when as parents you walk your kids to school, is something that shouldn't be overlooked. If you're close enough to school that you can walk your kids and you feel safe walking your kids, you're going to meet other parents, you're going to, you're going to get more integrated into the community, you're going to do more for the neighborhood. I don't think the benefits are just the sidewalks, just making the road safer. I think the benefits are greater than that, and that's why I want to see it moved forward, because these are the types of benefits, especially coming out of the pandemic, that we really need to be looking towards. So, I understand the challenges and the difficulties of moving it forward, but at the next meeting, I'm pretty sure I'm going to make a motion that we at least consider it. And I think there's, these aren't just sidewalks, these are things that build community, and I'd really like to see it happen sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Counselor Lombardi?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the, traffic calming, as it keeps coming up in Portsmouth, and Aldrich Road had a speed hump put in that is, I think, effective, but I don't know that. And I guess without Mr. Eby on board, I don't know if we have data on whether that is working well, and whether that is something that would be good for the rest of the city. So, I guess I have that question for Bullock Works, or the City Manager, and-
Happy to bring Peter down if you're-
If there are data for that.
What I can say, Counselor, in the absence of the former transportation engineer, we do have staff collecting data. I don't know that Peter wants to opine at this time about what is, about the success or the relative success of Aldrich, the Aldrich Road speed bump. I can tell you I obey it, but-
So do I.
We can bring Peter, Peter's bored.
You're on the council, you definitely, if you haven't been going the speed limit, you definitely start going the speed limit.
We have been collecting data, and we can, what we'll do is, we'll put it together in a form that we'll report back to Parking, Traffic, and Safety. So, it's something that, we've done that in a number of locations after treatments have been done, to confirm efficacy of the treatment. So, it's something that we'll, we'll bring back to Parking, Traffic, and Safety, and then that will be reported back to council in the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Blalock?
Yes, I have one other question, and this might be for Todd Henley. The, I believe, the plan with the pool was to build a new pool house, but then we found more issues with the pool, I believe, and the decision was made that it was not appropriate to put a new pool house on a pool that didn't work. But if Todd could-
Might be a Peter question.
Oh, Peter, sorry.
I'm happy, yeah.
Or a Karen question.
That's okay, to set the stage while Peter's joining us. There was an evaluation done about the aquatics of the pool and the costs associated with bringing those up and allowing the pool to function beyond this coming season. So, we're going to find a way to make it through the 2022 season, this would be for the following year, but Peter-
Correct, yeah. So, as you recall, the initial project was to upgrade the pool house. However, at the time, the review of the aquatics was done concurrently, because we wanted to make sure. And what aquatics are, it is the liner system, it's the gutter system, it's the pipes that feed the water to the pool, and the filter building and the filter system. So, that is the guts of the pool. Without that, a pool does not function and cannot be used. So, we started the pool house design and quickly determined that the important aspect of the pool was its aquatics, the guts of the pool needed to be replaced and reworked. We did the design and got it to the point where the cost was significantly greater than the monies allocated. So, that, that then made the decision to put off doing the pool house, because that was, you know, you could have a great pool house, but if you didn't have the guts of the pool, there's no benefit. So, the aquatics portion of the project moved forward, and the opinion of cost is roughly $5 million. As the former counselor pointed out, we have $3 million currently available, so we need two additional million dollars, and that is why you see two additional, $2 million more being requested here.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a question that probably, I'm guessing, City Manager or Peter Rice are likely to answer as well. In the budget, we have, for the capital improvements, bicycle and pedestrian and roadway improvements and intersection improvements. And when you look at them, a lot of them come into 2024 instead of 2023. And I'm wondering why so many projects are initiated in 2024 and so few in 2023?
I don't know the answer to that, and what Peter and I can do is formulate a report back.
Okay.
That was, that was another one of the transportation engineer and the former planning directors' joint project. So, to be respectful of the question and answer it thoroughly, we'll get you a report.
Thank you.
Any other council questions or deliberations? Not seeing any, we will, we will move on from this public hearing. I just want to state, I think there was some, a good recommendation, Counselor Cook, echoed by members of the public in terms of wanting to have more of a dialogue around the police station. It's, even though we come into the CIP and there's various levels of understanding around the CIP with everyone in Portsmouth, I think it's, it's good. This is a big topic of conversation, one that we have a lot of questions on. I'm going to request or add a work session to the February 22nd meeting that will start early there. It also happens to be my anniversary, so I'm really excited about that. But there's no place I'd rather be than talking, talking CIP. But it's, it's important that we always kind of start from scratch when it comes to CIP and look through these and question as we have. Again, just so folks are paying attention, you'll have another opportunity, you know, there'll be another meeting. We can also, you know, I'd suggest that we extend the public hearing and not close that , so the 22nd. Is that something that we can do here?
Let me do that?
Yes.
So, we'll extend the public hearing to the 22nd, so you'll have another opportunity to comment on the CIP before, and that will be following the work session on the police station. So, with that, I'm not actually closing the, the public, public comment, public hearing, we're going to extend it to the 22nd. All right, we now have a second public hearing on the second reading of ordinance, the public hearing, second reading of ordinance, amending Chapter III, Article 11, Section 3.1101-3.1104 -face coverings during the COVID-19 pandemic. A sample motion would be to move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the February 26, 2022 City Council meeting. I'll wait a motion.
Your Honor, I will go ahead and make that motion to move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the February 22, 2022 City Council meeting.
Second. All right, any discussion? Counselor Cook.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question around an amendment proposal I have this evening. Do I need to raise that now, or as a point of order, or do I need to raise that later?
As soon as now is the appropriate time.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This evening, I am proposing an amendment to this ordinance, which you all have in your packet. The amendment is designed as a response, really, to a lot of questions and comments we've received from the public, and also some concerns I have around the date, the deadline date for ending the mask mandate. Currently, the ordinance reads April 1st. And a lot of the comments that I've heard from the public have been around following the science, making sure that we're doing what is right scientifically, and that this is arbitrary, is essentially what I'm hearing. I don't think that this ordinance should be considered arbitrary, because I think the intent of the ordinance was to support our public health officer in issuing a directive. And so, my amendment really addresses that. It adds a section asking people to comply with all respects, any public health directive issued by our health department. And then, it changes the effective date to be whenever transmission drops below 8% or goes above 8%, essentially. What this does is it shifts the decision-making around when we have mask mandates back to our public health officer, who is the only person, I think, here, right now, if I can say this, I can presume, is actually an expert on the science behind what we should be doing for public health and protecting public health. It also shifts that timeframe where, you know, fortunately, if we, we put this in place and the public health, we drop below 8%, the public health officer can say, okay, we are now officially below 8%, and we'll let her make that determination. And then, the mask ordinance goes away. With the trends that we're seeing now, that will be fairly soon, I hope. I hope we're still trending in that direction. And so, then we are truly following the science, and we're following the advice that we're receiving from our expert.
Your Honor, I'd like to propose a motion-
Wait, hold on. That was a motion?
Yeah, I'm moving to amend as-
And that was seconded?
I was going to make that motion.
Oh, okay.
So, I simply motion to amend by including the red line version that's in our packet.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Bagley?
Yeah, I think it's a great amendment. However, I do have a concern about the 8%. So, if we could amend it further, that it goes away at 8%, but perhaps comes back at 10% or some other number. My fear is that we end up in a situation where one day it's 7.95, the next day it's 8.05, then it's 7.5, then it's 8.1. I don't want to have a situation where we're, I want there to be a bit of a buffer between where the mask mandate goes away and then where it's re-implemented. I don't know if there's a best way to do that.
Counselor Cook.
So, that's why I left in the phrase with enforcement discretion to be determined by the health department. I don't think that the city council should be determining when we drop below 8%. And the state issues those guidelines, and yes, what happens is ultimately you drop below for a day and you go back up based upon when testing data is released from the state. But ultimately, I don't think the council should be trying to determine that. Our residents shouldn't be trying to figure out the state data, and also, our businesses shouldn't be trying to do that. Ultimately, I think it falls to our health department to say, okay, we are officially below that number. So, and I think that our health officer has kind of, is following this a lot more closely than our average resident or business owner.
Counselor Moreau.
I had previously asked to get an update on our numbers. Do we have those for this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that Kim McNamara come forward. We have compiled the dashboard every Tuesday. It seems to be the day that the information is updated on a weekly basis, but Kim can speak to where the numbers lie, particularly today. Thanks, Kim.
Whether you're the state or the CDC, there's an average, seven-day average to 14-day average. And our current numbers are, New Hampshire positivity is 12.8%, and that's down from 21.9% on January 18th. Rockingham positivity is still a bit higher at 14.3%, but that's also down from 25.5% on January 18th. Portsmouth positivity is at 10.4%. New Hampshire active cases, 6,277, and Rockingham active, 978. These figures-
And our current numbers are, New Hampshire positivity is 12.8%, and that's down from 21.9% on January 18th. Rockingham positivity is still a bit higher at 14.3%, but that's also down from 25.5% on January 18th. Portsmouth positivity is at 10.4%. New Hampshire active cases, 6,277, and Rockingham active, 978. These figures do get adjusted and corrected as the week goes on. As far as the local hospitals, hospitalizations percent positive are continuing to improve, but they're still high. All New Hampshire towns, transmission is still substantial. Portsmouth Regional Hospital is at 100% occupancy, down from 115%. Wentworth Douglas Hospital also is seeing improvements, and they're also seeing some employees out. They were able to close their surge area. That's a real positive step. Exeter Hospital is also seeing improved numbers in operations, but is still concerned about the high number of infections.
Quick question, Kim. Just one more. Surrounding communities previously Exeter, do they still have their mask mandate in place?
I believe, well, I'm speaking a little out of turn here. I didn't read that recently, but I believe Exeter was March 1st was an end date. So they did choose sort of that arbitrary date.
Thank you.
I have a quick comment, which is impartial response to one of the speakers on why April 1st was chosen. I had proposed that date arbitrarily, just because April 1st was the day that outdoor dining started last year. So it wasn't related to any executive order. And I definitely like the language which city staff worked with Counselor Cook on, which is a trigger for this to happen versus an arbitrary date.
Counselor Morrow.
I just have a quick question for our city attorney. If we put this to third reading, it's enacted on the, which next means the 22nd. What if our numbers are at 8% at that point?
Becomes effective on passage of third reading. And if the amendment is made, then exactly, if it's exactly at 8%, the new ordinance is still in effect, the mask mandate is still in effect. It is, positivity rate has to drop, no, I'm sorry, positivity rate is equal or higher to be in effect. No, I was right. 8% or higher, it's in effect, 0.8% it's not, on the day it becomes effective.
So I guess to rephrase Counselor Morrow's question. If it was a 7.99% on the day that we passed final reading, what would happen?
Nothing.
So.
There would be no mandate.
There would be no mandate at that point. So if it was 7.99%, there would be no mandate if we pass it.
This may be a question, it sounds like it's pretty well thought out, but I'm still concerned about this 8%, 7.99%, 8.01%. Does the health officer feel that she has the discretion needed so that we're not, we don't end up in a, my fearing concern is that after Omicron, we'll have another variant, and we may have to go back down this road again. So it's not just this next time that we drop below, but what happens if it should happen again six months from now. Do we feel that this is written in such a way that we don't end up in a situation where restaurants, stores don't know day-to-day where the, if the mandate's going to be effect or not in effect? Because the trigger line is such a precise number.
Counselor Cook.
That's why, I guess, in answer to your question, the 8% is the guideline for when the mask mandate can be dropped. But ultimately, the enforcement discretion is determined by the health department. So if the health department says, okay, we're below 8%, it's reasonable to drop the directive at this point, then the health department can do that. I would say that our, and, you know, I have a lot of respect for our health officer and her training. And she hasn't been arbitrary to this point about when she directs changes or doesn't direct changes, given health policy. I don't see her taking away a mask mandate and then reinstituting it the next day and taking it away, taking away and reinstating. I see her making kind of very measured decisions around this as she has in the past. And so that's what I would be anticipating, seeing around this.
Mr. Mayor, if I could speak to that. Kim and her staff are very careful to look at seven and 14-day trends, and this would, to Counselor Cook's point and where I think you were trying to go, Counselor Bagley, this would not be a knee-jerk reaction of constantly moving with the needle, so to speak. So I have confidence in Kim and her staff to look out, to see a trend, and they wouldn't drop it or reinstate it unless they had qualifying data to support it.
And I'll just add something before Counselor Bagley. These numbers are numbers that I'm on the cdc.gov, and I appreciate all the information that folks in the audience and throughout these past few years have sent. But the numbers of which masks are recommended, fall in substantial and high transmission rates, those are 8% and higher. The only question that I would have then on this is as the science changes and this becomes endemic, is around, you know, and vaccines become more prevalent, et cetera, et cetera, as the CDC updates their guidelines in terms of guidance when it comes to aid, or this number right now, which is at 8%, how would we best, would that be inferred with the health officer to be able to make those judgments, or would need to update the ordinance? Because while I do appreciate myself and understand Kim, the entire city of Portsmouth doesn't get to work with Kim on a daily basis, and we have to create a system that folks can trust enforcement to, you know, battle against the feeling that something is going to be capricious or changed, you know, without proper notice. So I guess the question would be, and maybe it's to Kim, but Counselor Cook, is there room in this, as you see it, room in this amendment? So if the CDC were to change substantial transmission, then we would be able to, we'd be able to change alongside that, or would we need an updated number to the ordinance? Maybe that's a question to Bob.
Your Honor, there are two things going on at the same time, this ordinance and the health officer's public health directive. She has complete control over the public health directive, could change it as she deems appropriate at any time. So if the numbers change, as you said, and the health officer felt there needed to be adjustment in the directive, she could make it whenever she wished.
Okay. Counselor Bagley.
So just a comment for clarification. I did have the privilege of working with the health officer during the pandemic, and I don't want it to come across as if I was questioning her judgment. I think she's done a fantastic job in a horrible situation. I wanted to make sure that there was enough flexibility in this, that we're relying on her judgment and not the letter of the law. And it sounds like that's the case. So I don't want it to be seen that I'm questioning the judgment of the health officer, which I think is excellent. I just want to make sure that the flexibility is there, and that's what I'm hearing, that the flexibility is there, that we can rely on her judgment and not just the exact number.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll have a vote first on the amendment.
Is there a public hearing on?
Not at. Public hearing, yep. Sorry, I didn't see it on the. I just, I read whatever's in front of me, you know? But the, yeah, we have a public hearing. It was right there. Yep. Come on up. Now, remember, again, not three minutes, but.
Be respectful of your time. Yes, sir.
Remember that number in your head.
Absolutely. So once again, Rick Bexstedt, 1395 Visiting Street, I am so deeply sorry that you have to experience, what, two years of my life was? And the questions are great. We tried to come up with several different systems, working very closely with two of our senators, our congressmen, and even our governor to try and come up with a system. We had tossed around the idea of doing a color code system, you know, you got your green, your yellow, and your red kind of thing. It just became confusing and it just, it made it more complicated. So the 8% is something that I understand. It's still, I guess, somewhat fudged as far as a number, a more realistic number. I think I had heard a comment earlier at one of the other meetings to try to align with what our school system has gone and done. So with the school system, they had gone and allocated for a 10%. So 10% or greater, you wear a mask. Below that 10%, it's up to you. You could still wear a mask, but it's not a mandated type of thing. Other communities are doing it. My wife is a school teacher. She actually gets a weekly update on Monday, so Sunday night, an email comes out as far as where we are positivity rate, and she's stayed in that realm for some time where she's had to go on and wear a mask. It's something simple. It's easy to follow. We have our letters that go out multiple times a week sometimes, that we could then engage the community, even go and use Channel 22. One thing that I have learned is it is possible to put more than just seniors' information up there. I mean, we could put a lot of information out there over the last two years, which we had never gone and done before, and I'm grateful that we've been able to take advantage of that. Those little simple things right there. So it's a simple positivity rate of 10% or greater, you know what? We're highly recommending you got to wear those masks. But anything below that 10%, it aligns with other communities that are around us. It makes it less complicated, less confusing. No will against Kim. I know Kim, that is her number-one job. I lived it for two years, had many discussions with her, didn't always agree with her, but was always respectful of her position and her input, and I believe that she did the same thing with me. We worked in a dialogue for two years. So I would just maybe make that suggestion that a 10% would be an easier thing. It seems to be, I guess, better received across the board, whether it be our school systems, and I think it would be with the community. I'd just make it a little more realistic. So I just offer that as my two cents. So thank you very much.
Well, we have a couple of residents on Zoom, so we'll take those first.
First up is Robin Russo. Please go ahead and state your address, Robin.
90 Fleet Street. Counselor Bagley, there is no law regarding face masks. But there is a YouTube video out. It was a Senate hearing recently, approximately January 25th. Senator Ron Johnson invited in all the top virologists, epidemiologists, cardiologists, frontline doctors, frontline nurses, and the military to talk about what their thoughts were on, one of the issues was masks. Can it prevent the spread of this virus? They were unanimous, and they all said no. As a result, you're seeing countries all over the world getting rid of this mandate. So really, what we're dealing with is fear. It's basically a symbol of fear. It's not going to help anybody, according to the top doctors in the country, if not the world. And so I take my direction from them and not a local health administrator who has probably good intent, but may not be as educated as she should be on this issue, from the top doctors. They are really the top doctors in the world, because everyone looks to them for guidance, as you see with all of these shutdowns of the mandates. So really, we're dealing with Kabuki Theater, and I don't think we need to take people's rights away any more than has already been accomplished. So thanks.
Thank you, Robin.
There is one thing that I didn't.
Is your name and your address?
Carly Galante, 555 Sagmore. First of all, it seems you guys didn't listen to a word I said, that this is completely not legal and has no legal standing, and people actually do not have to follow this on any regard, whether you vote yes or no. So it really doesn't matter. But also, an important statistic that I want you to know is when, my boyfriend had to go get COVID tested recently for school, and the woman who did his test said, if your test comes out positive, you could have COVID. And we said, I'm sorry, could, can you specify what you mean by that? And she said, well, if you combine all the tests that are out there for COVID, only 85% of them, or a little over 85% of them, are actually positive tests. So when you're looking at your percentages and numbers, bear in mind that only 85% of those are actually positive and accurate to their positivity. And you know what? We're being, you know, programmed to view freedom as selfish, and it's not selfish. It's a God-given right. What you're doing is unconstitutional, and you're going based on opinion and not the actual law. And I think that's very wrong, because you're using your own personal opinions, not, not what is actual accurate information by our governor and all the legal things I brought to you. So I think it's ridiculous. I think what you're doing is personal and not for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Bagley, 213 Pleasant Street. There's obviously two sides of a very difficult issue, and a lot of the facts that are being reported by both sides are actually true, which makes it even more difficult. I think we have to take a step back. I have to agree with Counselor Bagley. This 8%, 10% is really quite fictitious, because New Hampshire as a whole is in very different states of its condition right now. Rockingham County suffered two spikes, which caused their seven-day average to go up twice. It does go up and down. If you look at the Hopkins data for New Hampshire, Rockingham County, and not for Portsmouth, because they don't have it, you can see that our surrounding communities are very different. So if you look at Maine, Maine has not had the upsurge that Vermont, Massachusetts, and New Hampshire had. Massachusetts put in, with a Republican governor, put in some pretty strict restrictions, and they have now far exceeded New Hampshire in getting their incidents well below now 8%. And more importantly, they were, hospital loads were reduced. If you look at New Hampshire, you know, if you look at the reports, as of this week, there were only two beds available on an emergency basis. However, when you dig beneath the surface, everybody thinks that means that the hospitals are 100% COVID patients. They're not. Generally, they're under 50%. And that's because for two years, people can't go in and get care. And so now those people flooded the hospitals, and then Omicron comes along, and we fill the hospitals again. And so that's why there are no beds. And if you watched 60 Minutes last night, you heard from the Nurses Association, so healthcare is provided, 53% of the healthcare workforce in the United States is provided by nurses. And they're quitting by the thousands. So it comes down to, you know, there are two circumstances that I think have been pointed out legally tonight. The governor has passed a ruling, and so, you know, no matter what you do, people can really do what they want. And they are doing that. You all know that Ottawa's been shut down in their January 6th, and it's going to happen here in the United States. You watch the bridges. This is going to become a calamity of two sides arguing, as you heard tonight. So my counsel, I work in the field, I've worked in vaccines for a long time. There's a lot of issues here that are political, and there are a lot of issues here. Follow the CDC? The CDC just changed all the rules. Cloth masks do work, but the studies have been done, they work with about a 60% efficacy versus a KN95, which is well over 90%. And the KN95s are pretty close. So what I understand is the school system can do what it wants, and that's important. And, you know, the evidence from the CDC is get the kids back to school and do whatever it takes. And that kind of, in a way, flies against the science of this disease, because it's not going to go away. There'll be another Omicron, there already is another Omicron, and it spreads even faster, but it, you know, the theory is it isn't. If you've got a higher percentage of the population, more people are going to still end up in the hospital and die, which is why the death rates are still going up in New Hampshire, and they're still going up in Rockingham County. So then the question becomes, what is it that your health officer has given you a recommendation, and it's just that? And so it seems that though this April date was arbitrary, the 8% seems too political. What happens if Ketteri goes from its very low percentage now up to 60, 70%, which is a real possibility? Because now it's the boosters, if you, you know, the protection is different. protection is different. So it seems to me that almost what would make sense, my wife would kill me for saying this, to drop it, because people are going to do what they want. You have a governmental ordinance, and you should let the health officer give a recommendation. Now, that's going to hurt the businesses, some businesses, the retail shops, who wants the authority of the city council behind them when they say you have to wear a mask, or for that matter, within council chambers here tonight, or within City Hall. But on the other hand, the argument is going to get so intense, is that when you go to third reading, you're going to get a lot of people like you heard here tonight. And what's the point? Because Omicron is going to start to go down. It's going to go back up again, but it'll be a different disease. And the debate will be, what did the city council really stand for? So if you really stand for something, pick a date and say, you know, it's going to end on March 15th. Forget the 8% and forget statistics that you don't know how to manage, but the health officer does. Or just let the health officer speak for itself. And it seems to me that's a better solution than the amendment that Counselor Cook was discussing, although I understand you did it maybe with the health officer in mind. So there's no right answer to this. I appreciate the chance to speak to this. I'm a big advocate of mask wearing. I think you can quote all kinds of statistics. The CDC is pretty clear. Most, if you go to Europe and China and countries that we don't like to think are important, and the way you control communicable diseases is with masks. We've known this in Japan for 100 years already. They have a terrible allergy problem, and they wear masks during the allergy season, cherry blossom, and they have a festival, and they all wear masks. This has become a, you know, it's my right to do what I want, and therefore I'll do what I want. And that's a poor argument for dealing with a pandemic and an endemic. So this is on your, it's on your conscience as to what's most important for the population of Portsmouth. And whatever you decide, you should ask yourself, what is it really about? Do you want to see another 10 people die that are your neighbors? And yet, at the same time, if you pass a mask ordinance, most of the people that have come here every weekend, you know, by the thousands, aren't going to wear masks. So it almost doesn't matter what you think or say. Tough situation. I appreciate what Rick said. He had to deal with it for a couple of years, and Counselor McKeon obviously was there at the time, as was Counselor Taber. It's a difficult issue. Don't politicize it. Stand firm for what you believe and do it, and don't politicize it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more. Bill Downey, I believe.
Bill, go ahead, state your address, please.
Bill Downey, 67 Bow Street. I agree with mostly what Dick just said. However, at the bottom, at the end of the day, you guys are tasked with a leadership decision, and many of his points were valid. However, if you look at hospitalizations, it's for a number of reasons the number is so high. I think it's a matter of respect for the healthcare professions as well as our safety, and abundance of caution never hurt anyone. We're not in the major tourist season, so I encourage you to continue this. Chin out and be firm. There's going to be a lot of resistance. Everyone seems to be a specialist and expert these days. But we do have a health director who just shared her knowledge with us. So I'd encourage you to stay the course, be flexible, and do your best with it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Sam Kenny, 7 Palm Path, Northampton. Am I able to ask you a question?
No.
Be able to respond? Okay.
You can ask it. We could come up with discussion.
Okay. Well, my question is, what data do you have that show that masks are reducing COVID-19 in Portsmouth? And do you believe that you should be able to force medically, make a decision for someone else in this region, in Portsmouth, to wear a mask? Because there's studies, hundreds of studies, peer-reviewed studies, that show they have little to no effect, and you're not choosing a mask, you're just saying any face covering. So you're being broad by not specifying what works. You're not sharing with the community what studies you are referring to that work. The CDC may make a recommendation on something, but the CDC also said that last year, you won't get COVID with a vaccination. That was proven to be false. There's video evidence of it. Michelle Rolinsky, head of the CDC, also said there's a 91% reduce in mortality rate in COVID. It's close to the flu. Do you mandate people wear masks for flu? I don't think so. I'm just asking, what evidence do you have, are you providing, to make these decisions? Because if you don't have any evidence that you're referring to that masks 100% work, you're forcing people in this area to make medical decisions beyond their own will. You know, whether there are exemptions in this, many people aren't willing to take that step to make an exemption that you have deemed okay. I just think it is broadly forcing people to do something that they don't want to do, especially when there isn't enough evidence that you are being, sharing with the public. Because if you're not sharing evidence that this is working, people are questioning, is this just politicizing science? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? If not, we will. Second bite at the apple.
Second bite at the apple. Adam said to Eve. The question becomes really critical about the role of the CDC. What is it? Unfortunately, it's part of your federal government when we're the United States of America. But this is not the first time that we've dealt with communicable diseases of serious order. Speakers don't realize that there was the bird flu, the swine flu, and we had Ebola here briefly in the United States. And the way we dealt with it was with quarantines. So this idea that, you know, you have to have a study, that's why we have a CDC. It's unfortunate that we don't have all the, the CDC doesn't have all of the answers, even though they're leading scientists. So I think it's a, I think so much of the politicizing of this issue about it's my right to make my decision versus we have a CDC and an FDA. The FDA has actually done a marvelous job, if you look at what's going on. So I just wanted to come back and highlight that when you hear speakers come up here and talk, and they demand for you to justify what your decision is going to be, tell us the data that's your principle, so I can argue with you about why your data is wrong. And that's what I said to, make up your mind. At the bottom line, what do you stand for as a council, as a majority? And what do you want to do? And if you want a mandate, vote for a mandate and put a date on it, and then decide to end it. Or conversely, if you feel that all of the arguments you've heard on the contrary, say, you know, we'll let the health officer speak on behalf of the city, let the health officer. I remember in the very beginning, and I know with Counselor Beck said, was in the very beginning, it was very difficult to get a mask mandate. We heard all of the same arguments that we're hearing tonight. That was two years ago. So I'm speaking forcefully because I think at the bottom line, you were elected, but you also have a conscience. Seems like that's the trouble we have at the federal level is we elect people, but then they do what's probably not on what they might really think or say. And I'm asking you to explore in your own way, your own self-views on COVID and make a decision. And there's no going to be a right decision. I apologize for coming up a second time and wasting your time, but I thought there have been other circumstances where the CDC has acted, and it just wasn't at the level, unfortunately, that COVID's at.
Thank you.
He's going to take a second. I'm going to take a second. So Rick Beck said again, 1395 Isingard Street. Based on my experience with everything, the date, the date is problematic. It's a hard thing. I mean, Attorney Sullivan will go and admit to that. We had a hard-line date last year. It was supposed to run at the end of June. We ended up going and doing June 1st versus June 30th, and it was recommended by Kim McNamara that we wanted to go and do the end of the month, and the council went and so chose. And it was based on percentages. The percentage works. I think it's just going and creating a level playing field that makes sense, rather than that percentage, that 2%, I think a 10% would go and work. It simplifies it and makes it easier for everybody. It can be done. Bob Sullivan actually told me that it was, we had the special meeting on Thursday, we did, and the first reading, and we did second and third reading on that Monday, and within four days, Bob, five days, it was the quickest we had ever actually dissolved an ordinance within that timeframe. He had never seen that been done in the 40 years that he had been here. So it is possible, but it becomes challenging and difficult, and more meetings, I'm sure Mayor McKeon wouldn't want any more meetings than that. Bless you. And, you know, just, again, it simplifies it percentage-wise rather than picking a date. It makes it quicker, and it sends that message out there. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. We have Robin Rousseau on Zoom for a second time.
90 Fleet Street. So we've become experts because we've had to become experts because we've been lied to, unfortunately. And if you sat in on that Senator Ron Johnson hearing with all the top doctors in the world, they all asked for the Senate to please open up an investigation on the CDC, FDA, and NIH, saying that they were corrupt. They're stuck with pharma executives, not the top doctors in the world. They're the top doctors in the world, and they said these organizations are approving drugs very inappropriately without the right testing. The CDC is giving out wrong guidance and deceptive guidance. And the NIH is in bed with the pharma companies, and a lot of the top directors at the NIH own a stock in these pharma companies. So if you have to do your own homework, and that's why I think the local health administrator or the local doctors have very good intentions, but you really need to do your own homework and look at what the top doctors are saying. So I stand, as someone said, you have to know where you stand. I stand for honesty and integrity, and I also stand for your freedom to make your own choices for your own healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. No other hands? I'll close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I have a parliamentary inquiry for the city attorney. If we adopt this amendment tonight at 8%, can we still change it to maybe 10% at the third reading?
An ordinance can only be amended by majority's vote at second reading. If you pass second reading tonight and it goes to third reading, it could still be amended, but it would require a two-thirds vote.
Suspend the rules. Thank you.
Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to address some of the comments, and maybe for those at home, you know, how, you know, I was elected not to enact or unenact mask mandates, and I certainly wish we didn't have to deal with them because there's much better and more important things we could be doing in the city. The way I look at it is, I suffer, I have not the best set of lungs, so I have a pulmonologist, and I know some other doctors in the area, and I ask for their guidance, and as I am not an expert in this field, I go with their guidance because they're doctors I know and trust. If it wasn't for the mask mandate, I probably wouldn't be wearing a mask right now. When I go into a store before the mandate was in place, if people were wearing a mask, I'd put it on. If people weren't, I wouldn't. The reason we're passing this, or at least the reason I would look to pass this, is we're going to go from 30, 40% people wearing masks to 80, 90% people wearing masks, because most people are going to follow the rules if it's a factual rule. And masks are helpful. I'm not a scientist. I don't know the peer-reviewed studies, but I spent a lot of time in countries such as China and Japan and Taiwan where they wear masks when you're sick, and, you know, the anecdotal evidence is there, and the scientific evidence is there. If we pass this tonight, it's uncomfortable, it's less desirable to be wearing a mask, but it's going to loosen the load on our hospitals, and I feel it's going to help keep our schools open. I'm not personally in favor of a mask mandate, and I wish I didn't have to wear it, but I think we can all agree, these last two years, lots of things have happened that we wish hadn't because of COVID. And I guess I express my feelings like that so people can know where I'm coming from and why I'm going to vote the way that I'm going to vote. And then, just to top it off, a parliamentary inquiry. I seconded Counselor Denton's amendment, so I believe it's a friendly amendment, Counselor Cook's.
Oh, is it a friendly amendment? Okay. Well, then that's the vote then. Okay. If it's a friendly amendment, is it?
Yes.
Yes. Since that's a friendly amendment, my understanding is the final vote we're going to take is on that version. I have one less amendment which I'd like to offer. So for everyone's knowledge, this amendment's going to be to what is now Section 3.1104 Public Health Directives, and it currently reads, "Any person in the city at any time shall comply in all respects with any public health directive issued by the Health Department." So the amendment that I'm going to offer, so it's a motion to amend to add the following to the end of Section 3.1104 Public Health Directives. Any health directive issued by the Health Department that is more restrictive than this ordinance will be brought as an amendment to this ordinance for first reading within 10 days of that health directive being issued. That health directive would remain in effect until the amended ordinance is defeated at second reading, defeated at third reading, or successfully passes third reading. And I could read that again, anyone would like. So again, this is adding these sentences on, and it would read, "Any health directive issued by the Health Department that is more restrictive than this ordinance will be brought as an amendment to this ordinance for first reading within 10 days of the health directive being issued. That health directive would remain in effect until the amended ordinance is defeated at second reading, defeated at third reading, or successfully passes third reading." And if someone seconds this, I could explain why very quickly. Second. So this would allow the Health Department to issue more restrictive temporary COVID-19 health directives. However, it would trigger an automatic democratic oversight process with the health directives then being voted on by us as amendments, kind of like we did here where the Health Department issued their initial directive, then we brought it forward as an ordinance. It'd essentially be the same process where, within her right, if the health officer offered or issued a health directive that was more restrictive than anything we eventually passed with this amendment, then within 10 days, it would be brought to us as an amendment to this for first reading.
Is there a second?
I second it, but I think it's up to Counselor Cook if he wants to-
If it's a friendly amendment.
Make it friendly.
Yes. I think this seems reasonable.
Oh, we got another friendly amendment. It's so uplifting. Council Moro.
I have a question because I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe one of the discussions we had the last time we were talking about this was that the schools were using the 8%, not the 10% that we heard tonight. So I just want to confirm that we are trying to align ourselves with what the schools are doing and that we're doing that appropriately.
That is true. The schools are at 8%.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I just have a couple of comments, and I'll pass the gavel. Assistant mayor, I guess not for this part, but the, it's difficult, I think, in this process, and I understand that it's political. I understand also that as a politician, because we're all politicians, whether we like the term or not, up here, that by the simple act of us doing something makes it political. But I can assure anybody that's out there listening, this is the furthest thing from my mind when it comes to enacting anything like this. In fact, I think when I was elected mayor, I told my wife, well, you're not going to be seeing me pass any mask mandates. And she pointed out to me, you know- And she pointed out to me, you know, very quickly that I was, that I was wrong about that. But I'd like to correct the record on, on one thing. When I, or I believe anybody on the dais votes to do anything on, on this magnitude, it is not out of a desire to control. It is out of desire to serve, to serve Portsmouth to the best of our ability, to think of the information that we have at our disposal. It's disappointing to hear members of the public state that we might need a, our, our health officer might not be capable. She's more than capable. It's difficult to understand that many in this country don't, don't believe the CDC. We don't have another Centers for Disease Control. It, it might not be great, but it's the best one we got. And so I agree with putting a percentage on there. Again, it's not perfect. It's difficult to say the least. I'd also agree with Counselor Bagley's points around trying to make it so that it, it's not something that it's a, maybe we're there, maybe we're not. I'd like to have, you know, potentially in third reading, higher numbers to reenact it because I think that would be more clarity to those that are, you know, following this on a, on a day-to-day basis. But the action that we take, it's never perfect. But as one member of the public stated tonight, you know, make a decision and stand by your convictions. I will tonight. I will be supporting this, not because I want to enact some sort of control, not because I believe this is a political tool, but because of the evidence that I see in our best effort as a city council to make sure that we are doing our best to protect the city, which we all love, that we all serve, I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you, Assistant Mayor. So with that, a roll call vote, please. Kelly? And I won't make you read back the amendment, but we do have the amendment from Counselor Cook marking it at an 8%. And we also have the amendment from Counselor Denton that would require any more restrictive measures to come before the council. Is that correct? As I understand it? Okay.
So this is on the amendment?
Oh, they were both friendly amendments.
They were both friendly amendments.
So this is a.
So this is.
This is the only vote we're going to take on public hearing B tonight.
Sorry. Assistant Mayor, Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blalock?
Yes.
Counsel Kirk?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. With that, oh, we got a presentation and then we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you, Mark, for being very patient. Glad I saw that and didn't make you wait any longer. I think it's by Zoom.
It is. Mayor, I'm happy to bring forth as panelists Mark Dabowski and Tim Whitney from Greenman Peterson Incorporated. They're the consultants for New Hampshire DOT. Joined by them is Michael Dugus from New Hampshire DOT. They'll all be here tonight. Mark is slated to give the presentation and I will bring it up as I'm talking. But this is the Hampton to Portsmouth former Pan Am Rail Corridor that runs parallel to Route 1. And they'll give a brief explanation of the project and they will answer any questions. And this really is their initial point of contact with us as their design is in the preliminary stages and they do anticipate public meetings in the future. So with that, I will turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. Just to clarify, will I be sharing my screen for the presentation or will you be?
I think we've got it on this end, Mark, unless it's easier for you to do so.
If you don't mind, I can share mine. That just means I have the latest one to be sure.
Okay.
You doesn't have to say next slide.
So Kevin, our producer, if you're listening, if you can allow Mark to share, that would be great.
Could one of you let me know if you were able to see my presentation?
Yes, we are. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you here tonight. My name is Mark Dabowski with Greenman Peterson. I'm a consulting engineer for the New Hampshire DOT. I'm the consulting project manager for the Seacoast Rail Trail Project that's currently in design that I'll be talking to you about tonight. I will try to be brief because I know it's been a long meeting already tonight. And I am joined, as you mentioned, with Mike Dugus, the State Highway Safety Engineer, and Tim Whitney. Both are available to answer questions along with me if you have any. And you can stop me at any time during the presentation, but I have about a dozen slides to go through. And as I mentioned, I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. The yellow line shows where our project is. It goes through the towns listed here with Portsmouth up at the top. And the, the black lines, which are a little difficult to see, I'll have a different slide that shows this, are the town boundaries. But it stretches from Portsmouth down through Hampton. And the, this project, which stretches all the way up and down the eastern seaboard of New Hampshire, is to improve the condition of existing railroad corridor. It's the old Hampton branch that was purchased by the state of New Hampshire, the DOT, and it's to be improved to accommodate bicycles and pedestrians. So the portion that we're talking about tonight is the dotted line portion that you see on your screen here. What we're doing to this rail, former rail corridor is we are removing the rail ties that are there today, clearing the vegetation. There are invasive species present that we have to deal with. We are making drainage upgrades. There's an extensive closed drainage system in Hampton that we're dealing with, doing ditch regrading and surface drainage regrading, making modifications at the roadway crossings, actually doing the trail construction itself. There are a couple of bridges on the trail, doing rehabilitations of the bridges and doing some cross culvert replacements as well. I did, I forgot to mention something on this previous slide is that there are two other projects that the New Hampshire DOT has in the current tenure plan to cover the full distance between this dotted line and the state line of Massachusetts. So from the bottom of the dotted line down to the state of Massachusetts, that one of the projects is in Hampton, in Hampton Falls. And that is 2.3 miles. That's slated for a 2030 construction. And the southernmost portion, the Seabrook portion, is slated for a 2020, I'm sorry, 2032 construction. So those are both in the tenure plan and they are, it will happen if the plan continues forward as it is today. There, there are a few environmental concerns on the project. There is soil contamination. There's an adjacent dumping site that is contaminated. There are historic resources on the railroad and there are wetlands that need to be preserved. As part of our required environmental evaluations, these are the, these are the primary obstacles, not obstacles, but resources that we're trying to protect and processes that we need to go through. So obstacles was the wrong word. In Portsmouth, so the city Portsmouth, the boundaries are outlined in yellow here. And if this is Route 1 in this, this yellow line and Route 1 bypass coming up over to 95, the proposed rail trail is in that pink or, that pink line, magenta line. And inside of Portsmouth, you can see it's, it's pretty much in between 95 and Route 1. And it runs up to the north here where another, an active branch does come in from the west. And it's at Barbary Lane where just, just south of Route 1 bypass where the project ends. To give you an idea of what we're planning to do, here's a picture of another rail trail in New Hampshire. This is actually the Cheshire Branch Rail Trail over in the Keene area. This is what you could expect this rail trail project to look like when it's done. 12-foot wide stone dust surface, two-foot wide grass shoulders on the side and clearing, enough to allow for the rail trail. I'm going to show you a couple of pictures of the actual rail trail in Portsmouth to give you an idea of what it looks like today and what we plan to do to it. On most of the trail, there is a rail line whose ties have been removed. And this is what you see as the double track here of people, people are using this today. Some places, about 70% of the trail looks like this where there is no standing water. It's relatively dry and you have a track that's been removed. And then over on the right side, it might be a little more difficult to see, but there are still rail ties there. So the corridor itself had two rail lines. The leftern most rail line had its ties removed and some of them are piled up on the side. Some of them have been removed offsite. But we have the second line of rail ties. And as part of the New Hampshire DOT's agreement with the city of Portsmouth and the other towns along the corridor is to remove all the rail ties in the corridor. So the project will remove the rail ties, trees and shrubs that have grown up through them, and it'll provide that stone dust or, you know, fine gravel wearing surface of 12 feet wide. Another section in Portsmouth that is typical of the trail looks like this where you have slopes coming down on both sides towards the trail. And some of these do tend to trap water. And one of our tasks in these sections is to not only remove the rail ties, which are difficult to see, they're over here on the right side of the picture, under the leaves, but it's, and to remove the vegetation, but it's also to develop ditches on both sides of the rail trail because those ditches are needed to convey, to take the water off the rail trail and to keep water from ponding on the rail trail itself. So this would end up with a stone dust surface 12 feet wide with two-foot grass shoulders. There are some portions of the rail trail in Portsmouth that look like this. It's wet, there's standing water, there is mud, and there, there are still rail ties over here on this right side of the picture where the line has the trees growing up in it. And the idea here is to first remove the mud and the muck that's down in this, this rail line, remove the ties and trees over on the right side, spread the existing ballast over both sides, put gravel down, raise the trail a bit, establish ditches on both sides, and then put down the stone dust surface. So in situations like this, we have a lack of ditches on the side of the rail trail and it's leading to ponding of water. And we're going to try to improve that to get the water off the rail trail. To show you just a couple of example photos of some features inside of Portsmouth, the photo on the left is the Pickering Brook Crossing. What's happened here is it has been partially excavated and the trail, this is actually like a reinforcement of a slope and the trail is running up at the top corner of this photo, but the trail, the rail line used to run over this, this open culvert. So this is one of the culverts that has been damaged and we need to do work to it. Over here on the right photo is a granite block cattle crossing. The cows actually used to cross underneath the rail line through this crossing. This will be maintained. It's, it's of historic value and the rail trail will, you know, be on top of it. We, one thing I want to mention is that we have taken this project, which in total is 9.6 miles long from Portsmouth all the way down to Hampton, and it has been split into two projects. The northern segment is the portion that contains Portsmouth and that northern segment is 7.9 miles long. And there's a southern segment which has been split off into a second project, which is 1.7 miles long. And in between the two of them, over here on the right at the Hampton, North Hampton Town Line, there's a triangular piece of property that is currently a New Hampshire DOT owned property that has a maintenance shed on it. And the idea here is that this could possibly become a trail access point and the project would split here. And this northern segment, this pink line, so stretching all the way to Portsmouth, we're advancing into design more quickly than the southern segment. And the reason for that is because there are some drainage complications in the Hampton portion of the project. There's a, there's a closed drainage system underneath the rail trail that is taking extra time to, to study and engineer. And we want to advance the northern project as quickly as we can, but the idea is here that the northern project will probably take two construction seasons to build, whereas the southern project being shorter will take one. And so even, we will start the northern project a year ahead and we will finish both at the same time. And I'll have a slide on the schedule to clarify that. The, the cost of this is the northern 7.9 mile segment, which includes Portsmouth. We're estimating it to cost $5.1 million for about eight miles of trail. And the southern segment, which includes more complicated drainage features, is about $2 million for 1.7 miles. These prices for miles and these costs are pretty typical of what we have seen in other rail trails with New England. And there's also an East Coast Greenway design guide. This trail I didn't mention is part of the East Coast Greenway, which is a trail that connects, is going to connect on Callas, Maine, the Canadian border, all the way down to Key West, Florida. So this is our New Hampshire portion of it. And I do want to also mention, tied to this cost estimate, is that the funding for this project is in the draft tenure plan and it, it has been approved by New Hampshire DOT. So the funding is there for this project. Last two slides deal with schedule for this northern 7.9 mile segment, which includes Portsmouth. We're right now in the midst of public officials meetings, of which tonight is one of them. And we're going to each town and city along the corridor and presenting what we're doing. And that takes place this month. We're completing our, the initial phase of our design, our preliminary design this month as well. In the spring, we will move into public informational meetings in which we ask members of the public to come, comment on the project, we'll present it to them. We'll move forward into final design, march through November, and we anticipate construction for these two mile, for these 7.9 miles of the northern section to take place between 2023 and 2024. We anticipate two years of, of construction. And, and the reason for those two years, just to mention, is because we, the access points are difficult on the rail trail and it's going to take the contractor quite a distance to, to back in and out, to remove rail ties, to bring the gravel in and out and the mud out, I should say, the mud out, the gravel in. And then for the southern 1.7 miles in the Hampton section, we're following a similar schedule, but longer. As I mentioned, it's, it's delayed by a year compared to the northern segment. Final design will be in 2023 and construction in 2024, again, so that both projects will be complete by the end of 2024. So that's the end of my presentation and I'd like to, I'll stop sharing my screen and I would like to open it up for any kind of comments that people have or questions.
Mark, any questions from the council? Counsel Lombardi?
Yes. Where are the access points to the trail? Are there multiple ones throughout the trail? How do you get to it?
Thanks for asking that. I meant, meant to mention something about that. The project itself that New Hampshire DOT is doing and that we're working on is only the trail. We are not designing any access points. There are people who are working on access points for the trail. That's just not part of our project. Scott Bogol with the Rockingham Planning Commission is, is spearheading that effort. One of those access points is possibly going to be this triangular property between Hampton and North Hampton, kind of in this split between the northern and southern segments. There is, you know, there's an access point off of Barbary Lane, Portsmouth. There are other access points, potential access points down along the trail, but like, I don't know if you want to say anything else about that other than it's just, unfortunately, it's not part of our scope of our project, but other people are thinking about that and planning for it.
That's, that's correct, Mark. And good evening, everybody. I am Mike Dugus. I'm the Highway Safety Engineer for the DOT. As Mark said, the agreement that was executed with the communities explained that this project would, would construct the trail proper, that any amenities beyond that would be upon the communities to finish. I'd note that in, in my review of the Portsmouth Capital Improvement Program, for a number of years now, they've, they have recognized the need to put effort into establishing formalized trailheads. So the trail will cross public roads within Portsmouth at Ocean Road, Danfield, Foley Drive, I believe you call it. And then also, as Mark said, the terminus will be at Barbary Lane.
Any other questions? Counsel Blalock?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, besides you mentioned if there was an access way, the community would be responsible, would the community be responsible for any other parts of the trail?
Yes, well, the major part of it, of the agreements that was executed stated that the DOT is responsible for the initial construction, as I explained. And then once it's finished, it will be turned over to the, the respective communities for maintenance of the section within their community. And so the maintenance going forward- And so the maintenance going forward, the routine maintenance, would be on the communities to take care of.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, now, I have, this is probably likely a simple question, but is there any expectation on the maintenance? It's gravel, so it's not like we're going to be plowing it for, to maintain running or biking. Would we just assume to leave it in a natural state in the winter to allow cross-country skiing? There are agreements that we have with other communities on how that's, it's going to be maintained?
I say that's reasonable. It's for non-motorized use, so I don't see the need to groom it or, as you said, plow it. The maintenance is really expected to involve clearing fallen trees, making sure the brush alongside the trail is maintained. But the simple routine tasks.
Well, thank you. I don't think we have any other questions. Really excited about it. I know that a lot in the community are excited that this made it into the 10-year draft plan and appreciate the work that you guys have obviously put into it and the time it took tonight to present it with us. So with that, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. And we'll meet back in here at nine, we'll say seven-minute recess, 9:35. Thank you.
All right, welcome back. Next on the agenda is council items. I all started off appointments to be considered. Genevieve Oshiel to the Blue Ribbon Committee on Portsmouth Arts and Nonprofits, and Jeffrey Baraklau to the Blue Ribbon Committee on Portsmouth Arts and Nonprofits. Those again will be brought forth at the next meeting to be voted. Appointments to be voted will be Jason Hutt to the Cable Television and Communications Commission, Chris Benesick to the Cemetery Committee, Eva Boich to the Cemetery Committee, Deirdre D. Forte to the Cemetery Committee, Michael Griffin to the Cemetery Committee, Dawn Margerson to the Cemetery Committee, Sue Pallador to the Cemetery Committee, Carrie Rubenstein to the Cemetery Committee, Susan Sterry to the Cemetery Committee, Steve DiTrullo to the Sustainable Practice Blue Ribbon Committee, and Jay Lieberman to the Sustainable Practices Blue Ribbon Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next up is the appointment of the Governance Committee. I was very excited with Counselor Cook, the time that she put into this. I expect there will be much work that goes into this, and ultimately, we're only as good as a government at the process and rules that we follow. So really pleased that we can have Counselor Lombardi, Counselor Tabor, and Counselor Cook continue on that good work. Look forward to the report backs to come and any recommendations that might follow. Next up is the approval of, actually first, I will have a late edition on this, the city. The following members were at the, on the swag. Safe Water Advisory Council at the end of 2021, Counselors Lozenby, Cliff Lozenby, and myself, David McCaffrey, and community members Andrea Miko, Katri Hillman, Rich Deep and Timon, and one vacancy, along with the City of Portsmouth Fire Department, Bill McLellan, City of Portsmouth Water Department, Brian Getz, City of Portsmouth Health Department, Kim McNamara, City of Portsmouth School Board, Hope Van Epps, Environmental Scientist, Dr. Roy Schrader, New Hampshire State Representative, David Meehan, New Hampshire State Senator, Rebecca Perkins-Koakah. When reinstated by the City Council in January 22, the following city councillors were selected to serve on the Safe Water Advisory, Safe Water Advisory Group, Rich Blaylock and Vince Lombardi. And I am stating this as such that these are the members and membership of this committee going forward. Thank you for listening to me talk a lot. And then we will have the approval of council rules and orders. I await a motion to approve the council rules and orders as amended in your packet.
So moved, Your Honor. Second?
I'd like to offer an amendment. So this will be a motion to amend Rule 43B. Give everyone a moment to find it. And this has to deal with the public dialogues. So my motion is to amend Rule 43B by replacing on the night of every other regularly scheduled city council meetings with of citywide neighborhood committee ward forums. There's a second, I'll.
Second?
So I was on the council that initially adopted the public dialogue sessions. It was a good thought to have them, but it was always the same people who came to speak at public comment participated in the public dialogue. And we were always trying to think of ways of how we could improve it. And what this would do is it would move it from City Hall, so instead of having it at every other city council meeting, it would be at the citywide neighborhood committee ward forums where, my understanding is each ward has at least one, was a presentation by the city, and then the councillors could get there 45 minutes early and we could sit down and interact with the dialogue. It should be a different set of residents, be open to all residents, but it should be more likely to have residents from that ward attending.
Any other discussion on that? Counselor Moreau?
I think that's a good idea, actually. I had a giant why for this entire section is because we haven't done it in a long time. So, and I, now you've just answered part of my question as to why, and it's because you don't get a lot of differentiation, but doing them at the ward meetings, and I think there's probably other opportunities that we could do that at already existing public meetings that may happen as well. So maybe I think we should put it in such a way that we could make it very flexible to be able to add that to another meeting if we needed to do so, if there was, you know, whether it's a citywide neighborhood committee meeting that's going on or something like that.
I'm going to pass the gavel. So I think the intent of this is great if we could change it so that it's flexible. I think one thing that I've said in the past, and I think a number of other councillors have said is, can we move City Hall to other parts of Portsmouth? Certainly not on a, you know, regular basis, but to try to touch the five wards in our two terms, I think having a dialogue session attached to that would be something that we could do. So if we could just slightly change the wording to offer some flexibility around, you know, having these outside of City Hall, or, you know, at a, your entire amendment, or as possible other alternatives, something along those lines. Josh, you're a great lawyer, I think you could on the fly come up with something.
Yeah. Give me a moment here. But I accept that friendly amendment if it's.
Maybe if we're continuing with the neighborhood city meetings, my understanding is those rotate around, they're at the middle school, they're at Little Harbor, so is that what you were asking, still at the neighborhood committee meetings, but not in these chambers for the public dialogue?
No, I simply, I would like to see us have city council meetings outside to bring City Hall to other neighborhoods. That's a, but that would come through the Governance Committee if there was something that we could possibly bring to, you know, really promote engagement. I put that on top of Josh's, but, you know, I think for the effort of, or for the sake of clarity and brevity, I'd accept the motion as written and for the Governance Committee to come and take a look at this further with ways to adopt this rule further. But I would like to change it tonight only since that we continually not have it here. Not something that, you know, I'd like to have moving forward.
Should I restate the original motion? All right, so the motion is, find it, to amend Rule 7 by adding, wait, one moment, my apologies, to motion, motion to amend Rule 43B by replacing on the night of every other regularly scheduled city council meetings with of citywide neighborhood committee ward forums.
Which only happened quarterly, right?
I believe it is quarterly, but I can't speak to.
Yeah, I think it is quarterly.
It is quarterly.
Passing the gavel again, maybe a simpler way that we could do this would be to state the city clerk suggests amending the rule so that no public dialogue occurs only at city council work sessions and/or public dialogue sessions and/or other noticed public meetings occurring no more than quarterly.
I'm open to that as well.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any other rule change? Counselor Denton?
I have a second amendment, and it's a motion not to adopt the proposed changes to Rule 7, and that's the order of business. There's a second, I can speak to that as well.
For a purpose of discussion.
Sure. So the primary difference between what's proposed and what we currently do is what we currently do, it has the mayor and the city councillors go before the city manager and staff. And I was the one who previously amended the rules to have the mayor and city councillors go before staff. That was essentially done for two reasons. The first reason is just the form of government, because the public would speak during public comment, and then it would be the mayor, the city council, that's where the public representatives, and then staff. The other reason why is a lot of the things that we bring forward are pressing issues in the community, like outdoor dining. And before this amendment took effect, prior councils had the city councillors going very last on the agenda, and you would have people waiting until 11 o'clock at night to hear what the councillor has to say. And under either version, the rules could be suspended. So if we make this amendment, going back to how it used to be, then a city councillor could motion to move their item forward, but that's kind of awkward, moving your item forward, versus if we stick how it currently is without the change, which would be city councillors go first. At any point, we could pull a hot item off the city manager's agenda and move it ahead of hours.
Counselor Bagley?
I agree with Counselor Denton on this. As somebody that attends quite a few city meetings, it's nice to see something under a councillor's name, come to the meeting, speak to it, and then have it come up relatively soon in the meeting, so that you can then leave after that item of interest. But.
Counselor Tabor?
Could we hear from staff as to why the recommended change?
If I may, Mayor?
Sure.
There was a precedence in the last two years, at least the two years I've been on board, that to put the city manager items toward the end of the agenda lent itself to real late appearances, whether in person or now fortunately via Zoom by the staff. And so it was essentially a request of me to, that if there were an expectation on the part of the council to have staff present, it would be my preference not to have staff work super late, if that's possible. So it essentially came from my desire to see staff not need to regularly spend late nights here. There, I can say that it is better to have folks participate via Zoom. That's been an interesting silver lining accommodation from the pandemic. But quite frankly, I'm happy to be here, and I know there are key staff that need to be here, but it was essentially to allow those staff not to stay extra late.
Thank you, Susan. Any other questions? I'll pass the gavel and speak on it since I, and, you know, you always, you tend to make the rules fit what you had previously, and we had a lot of late nights. I, you know, those could come back again, once we get used to each other, we might start talking a whole lot more, and nights could go on. And so it was a staff decision. It was also, it tended to be a number of the action items that we would need to take, you know, sign permits or emerging of lots, tended to have lawyers, you know, hanging around here as well billing hours at the, you know, I'm assuming they're billing hours. And that was, you know, trying to get folks in and out. I do hear, and, you know, this is not, this was my, well, when we were talking about setting the agenda, that was my first question, is could we move some of these up? So it wasn't just city staff requesting this. I thought it would be a good idea to pull forward. I do think that if there is a, a, an item that gathers the public interest, and we said it could go both ways, that, you know, grabs the zeitgeist of Portsmouth and we say, you know, we want to pull this up, I think that that is easier to do than necessarily pull a presentation up forward. You know, I believe that a lot of what we do as a council is much more forward looking than some of the things that we have to act on immediately. And so that was, I guess, the reason why, is there was informational items that I would hope that the city that was sticking around to hear us talk about would hear, and there was a lot of good information that folks just didn't hear at the end of a meeting, because once that, that key point, you know, that was brought up by a councillor was lost or was passed through, they wouldn't stick around to some of those, those key points on the informational items. So the informational items were, found themselves kind of just, you know, on YouTube and not necessarily in the moment. And then I think that, again, some of these action items were, you know, keeping staff as well as, you know, others in the community here much further into the night. But I look forward to, if we can, we'll have a, have a roll call vote on this, and, and this is just on the proposed change on Rule Number 7, Order of Business.
Correct, so voting yes now means that you want city councillors to go prior to the city management.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Assistant Mayor Kelly? Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
No.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
No.
Counselor Cook?
No.
Mayor McCaffrey?
No.
Motion fails, five to four. Four in favor, five opposed. Motion passes, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Motion fails.
Fails, I was right the first time. Sorry.
All right, and so now, are there any other items? Counselor Tabor?
Yes, Rule 41, members of the public addressing the council by suspension of the rules. I would make a motion that we keep the old language. I, often, we all find there's somebody out there who is a better expert than we are, and the effect of the change would take us from requiring simple majority to hear from a member of the public to two-thirds. And the language in the original limits the speaker, the guest speaker, to five minutes, which I think is a nice boundary to place. And so I would propose that amendment if there's a second.
Second?
Any other comments on that? Counselor Moreau?
I'm really just looking for more of an explanation. So this is outside of public comment, outside of a public hearing, the council just going to allow someone to speak without giving them permission by a vote?
Yes.
And that's happened?
Yeah.
No, we have to vote to give permission.
Because, well, the, okay, so passed by a majority vote, okay, all right. But so if we're changing it the way it said, we'd have to vote to suspend the rules to allow it, so.
Which is a two-thirds vote.
What's the difference, I guess is what I'm?
It's one vote.
One, one vote, okay, yeah. I, I'm, you see, I'm.
And the benefit of.
Fully understand what we're talking about here. I guess I could be swayed either way. Go ahead, try.
Well, also the benefit of the, the five-minute rule.
We could add the five-minute rule to the other part, too.
So I just, there are occasions, I've experienced it, where we're talking about a major project in the city, and we have a question, and the people with the closest knowledge are right there, and it can actually speed our debate along and give us information. I, I'm not saying that we want to open up our meetings to be a dialogue, I'm saying that occasionally we would want to vote, hear from somebody who knows a lot about a subject.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on the explanation says this, that this change was made to conform to the rules of current council practice. So has the council in the past been suspending the rules anyway, even though that wasn't the rule on the?
Yes, the current council practice was to suspend the rules to allow a person to speak other than a public here.
Okay.
Public comment session.
Thank you.
So just to paraphrase, or to simplify it, what we should have been doing over the last two years per council rules was if somebody was requested to speak, we would vote, and five members voting in affirmative would allow that person to speak. What we have done is suspend the rules each time in order to do that, even though that was just a, except for public comment sessions. That is not, I guess, what we've done here. Counselor Tabor, since this is addressed by the public, would you accept a friendly amendment, pass the gavel, to refer Rule 41 to the Governance Committee and come back with a recommendation on, on this, since it deals with public dialogue, I would rather?
That's fine, happy to do that.
Is the second agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Just a voluntary inquiry, did you make the appointments to the parliamentary?
I did, you missed it.
Oh, I missed it, I was asleep or something.
Yep, Counselor Lombardi, Counselor Tabor, and Counselor Cook.
Okay, excellent.
That was right before, blink and you miss it, it was right before this thing we're talking about right now.
Okay, all right.
But, so all in favor of referring Rule 41, addressed by the public, to the Governance Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other questions or amendments on rules that we have in front of us? All in favor of the proposed changes with the amendments?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, oh, one little thing, McIntyre, so I have a verbal report on this. Two, I guess, things that I'd like to share on this. One, we had a non-public meeting, in that we heard from, from our attorney on this, given the litigation that we face. First, I'd like to share with the City of Portsmouth, our path forward on this, I did not reappoint the McIntyre Subcommittee. And the reason I did not appoint a McIntyre Subcommittee is that the charter is pretty clear, when it comes to legal matters, ones where we find ourselves in right now, the city manager is the sole person that is hiring and should be engaging with our legal representation, in this case it's representative, or attorney colonally. So I have my full faith and confidence that a city manager will be handling this to the best of her abilities, and the council will act as we do as council and set the policy direction of that. So that's the first update. The second update is that I will be calling a special meeting for Thursday, February 10th, that is, in a couple of days, that is this Thursday, to consider a motion of the council to rescind all action of the council regarding the November 18th meeting. And this is an attempt to, we will have public dialogue on that and a conversation around that, but this is from advice of council. So on Thursday, we will be having a, a motion to be brought forth to rescind the action that was taken at the previous council meeting, November the 18th. So with that, I am going to move on to Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a sample motion to, for the adoption of our legislative principles and procedures for testimony. So a sample motion, if I had a second, I move to adopt the principles for legislative positions and procedures for submission of testimony.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry?
Sorry?
Sorry, you went by so quickly. I, I just had one question about one of them, if that's possible. On number 17, are we?
Do you mind reading it for the public?
Yep, support policies that create affordable housing as well as incentives for the construction of affordable housing. I'm wondering if we could also make it sort of an additional part, is to oppose any policies that block efforts to create more affordable housing. I don't know if that's actually, maybe it's part of what I've, what you have in there, but I just wanted to like get a consensus that that's what we're trying to do, is we're also, you know, we're not against support, but we're going to oppose policies that actually block that effort, because I think some of those are out there.
I would support that wording.
Yeah, okay. That's my request.
Let's see, is that, I guess that would be an amendment?
A friendly amendment, yes.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Counselor Denton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I motion for reports back on funding options to include the capital improvement plan to begin the installation of Level 3, 480-volt electronic vehicle charging stations in parking zone A in FY 23, and to begin an annual greenhouse gas emission inventories. There's a second, I'll.
Second?
All right, so voting for this is simply voting for those reports back, it's not going to be voting for either of those things to happen. Portsmouth's prior greenhouse gas emission inventories have showed that 70% of our greenhouse gas emissions have come from transportation, and the wide consensus that the primary way to reduce transportation greenhouse gas emissions is through electrification. And to make people know, electrification requires electric vehicle charging stations. I actually didn't know this until I got involved, there's three types of electric vehicle charging stations. The first type, Level 1, is, just think of it as a wall socket in your garage, might take up to 20 hours to charge. Level 2 is the type which you'll see around town, which Portsmouth has several of, which might take eight hours or so to charge. And the Level 3, which this is asking for, a direct current fast charger could take only 30 minutes to charge a battery. And Portsmouth has previously led on electrification. We held two electric vehicle car shows, which coincided with National Drive Electric Week. We passed an electric vehicle charging station ordinance, and as I just alluded to, the And as I just alluded to, the city has electric vehicle charging stations, which are Level 2, both in the City Hall, Lower Lot, the Foundry Place Garage, and in the Hanover Garage. Experts agree that the best location for any charging station, let alone DC fast chargers, are somewhere highly visible, like any of the parking spaces in Zone A. And just some backstory here, back in 2018, I proposed downtown Level 3 electric vehicle charging station to coincide with the Market Square upgrade in the CIP. However, the city manager and the mayor at the time said, hey, let's try Bridge Street Lot instead. But we did successfully add the electric vehicle charging station, a DC fast charger, to the CIP, which is subsequently removed while I was on hiatus. Currently, there are 12 universal DC fast chargers in New Hampshire. I believe the closest one is in Seabrook. And the Department of Environmental Services released Volkswagen funding from that big settlement agreement back in September requesting applications for just this, for DC fast chargers in New Hampshire in the travel corridors which we belong in. Applications are due by February 25th, and at least a dozen municipalities have applied, including Dover, Durham, and Exeter. So there's funding out there for this. And there's also going to be funding available from now the bipartisan infrastructure law for this. And a lot of EV drivers may actually bypass Portsmouth in the future if they don't have a fast charger where they could go. And the first half of the motion is simply for a report back and how we could possibly fund this in this upcoming fiscal year, ideally in Zone A. And one more thing of note on any electric vehicle charger, it makes sense to install them when there's already work being done. So if it's during the Market Street build, it makes sense to do it then. During the Fleet Street, it makes sense to do it then, instead of digging everything up a second time. And finally, the, just to complete the circle, I started talking about the greenhouse gas inventories, our net-zero energy policy, and our Sustainability Committee's request for Climate Action Plan. They'll all be better if we increase the frequency of our greenhouse gas inventories. For those that don't know, they happen, they've happened every six years by UNH Sustainability Institute fellows. 2006, 2012, 2018. You can find them online. I would love to see them annually. This isn't a motion to see them annually. It's just a motion for a report back and how we could fund it more frequently than currently is. Thank you.
Counselor Lombardi.
In terms of the Level 3 charging stations, the, isn't the problem the fact that there's inadequate electrical service coming into the downtown for, for that?
I've heard the same thing. I look forward to reading something, whatever it might be, the issue. But in the report back, I'd want to see alternatives as well.
We will address all of that, Mayor, in the report back.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Denton, for your work on this. You know, your continued work during your hiatus on this. And to be able to bring it back, especially now with funding opportunities closing, and there being a lot of federal funds, is something that hopefully we can have back in time to, to act. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I guess? No? Next up is Counselor Moreau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we moved to form, moved for the formation of the Land Use Committee, which will look at device, diversifying land use regulations within the city. The purpose is to review all current zoning and policies surrounding housing and development to encourage sustainable, diverse, and affordable development, including expanded multimodal transportation. With a report back to City Council on recommended alterations to the zoning and existing policies, along with any new zoning or policies to be considered, important in furthering the city's goals. Further, where the committee, I'm hoping, if everyone agrees, shall consist of eight members, which two would be from City Council, two members from the Planning Board, two members from the Planning Department staff, one from Economic Development Commission, and one member from the Portsmouth Housing Authority, as approved by the mayor.
You have a second?
Second.
And I have put a lot of thought and have a list of members to be considered if the council so, and there so choose to create this committee. I think we need to take a look at everything that we've been talking about over the last year. I think we need to take a look at city-owned properties. I think we need to take a look at how zoning is affected. I have already been talking to different speakers to come in and actually talk to the committee about different ways that other communities are working, and trying to figure out all the different ways that we can actually try to promote affordable and sustainable development. I think that we, probably there are some things that we can do pretty short-term and right away, and there's some things that are probably going to take a bit longer. But I think we need to get started, and if approved tonight, I'd like to schedule, start scheduling the first meeting tomorrow.
I'll pass the gavel. So incredibly excited to see this. I think that when we look at the development, we see it's, it's all as a result of the zoning that we have, zoning that has been created. And it's probably time to look at that, as Portsmouth has, has changed certainly before COVID. But after COVID, I think it's going to change dramatically more in the, in the coming years as kind of work from home becomes a feature and not a bug. And there is a, a large opportunity to look and tweak and to make changes where necessary. Incredibly pleased with the, the members to, to be approved. I would ask for a friendly amendment, and that we add an additional city counselor on this. And I would want to nominate Assistant Mayor Joe Kelly to sit on side. So if that's a friendly amendment, we would, we would have.
Absolutely agree. Not a problem.
And so does the second agree to that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? No. Oh, Counselor Tabor.
Just, what's the timeline that you anticipate? And do you see periodic reports back to the council or one final document?
Oh, no, there'll be periodic reports, probably, I would assume, monthly at first, maybe more, you know, maybe every, every other month as we get some stuff going. But it's a committee, everyone I've talked, I've talked to everyone on this list, and just for the record, I have asked the city manager to put me on the agenda for the Economic Development Commission this coming Friday morning. So I will be there, and I'm going to request that one of their members, they basically nominate who they would like to join that group. But I thought it was very important that we have the view from Economic Development, from Portsmouth Housing Authority. So we make sure that there's plenty of voices in there. So my hope is, is that we have some recommendations that we can bring to you in short order, maybe within a month, and then possibly give you at least updates on what the conversations we're having, the people we're talking to, and where we're going with it. But I feel that this is important, and I'm kind of excited about it. I actually have, was part of the Planning Board for the last nine years, so I've seen all the changes since we started with character zoning in downtown, and all of the character zoning changes and what we've done, the ADU laws and all of that. And it's been kind of exciting to see whether it works or it doesn't work, and I think it'll be even more exciting for us to sort of pick it apart a little bit, get some new perspectives from some new people, and really try to tweak it and make it work better for our changing and ever-evolving community. But maybe down the road, I see this as a committee that might need to be a standing committee that stays a longer period of time to review zoning on, you know, an annual or bi-annual basis to see what's working and what's not. But for the moment, I think we just have some big changes that need to happen, so. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So I am really excited also about the, the staff that we have here. The new Planning Director, Beverly Zen, and Nick Cracknow, seen a lot as well, and look forward to working alongside the, you know, the, the new Chair of the Planning Board and the new Vice Chair. I think that there's a desire to, in Portsmouth, to see changes when it comes to land use, ones that are going to benefit Portsmouth through years to come. So thank you, Counselor Moreau, for putting this forward. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving right along. Are we 10:30 yet? Nope, not 10:30. All right. Counselor Bagley and Assistant Mayor Kelly, you're up.
So this is for a staff report back on outdoor dining in 2022 and future years. And a sample motion would be to move to request a report back from the city staff on outdoor dining in 2022 and future years at the February 22nd, 2022 meeting, in particular for suggestions for fees, fee implementation process, insurance requirements, possible alternatives to Jersey barriers that may allow for more flexible use of space, accessibility, general appearance, dates of the season, as well as any other concerns or suggestions the city may have in regards to health and safety. In addition, a plan to engage with the downtown residents, retail, office, and restaurants in the discussion and planning process in an ongoing manner. If I have a second, I'll speak to it.
Second.
So I think, at least for me, and a good number of residents and visitors to our city, one of the silver linings of COVID is the vibrancy that the outdoor dining brought to our downtown. We had a, a group, the Portsmouth Design Professional Alliances, led by Bob White, who put together a fantastic plan on how we could implement something relatively quickly. I think our city did much better than other similarly sized cities. It may have taken us a little bit longer to get it up and running, but what we got up and running was, was something that could be sustained for the long term. So I'd be looking to encourage outdoor dining and encourage it in such a way, I, I call it the Massimo's Press Room Café Von Solen corner. They had the front porch there. Massimo's looked amazing, as did the other restaurants on Penn Hollow. Not that other restaurants in town didn't do, do a great job. I just think they set the standard very high. They were accessible. They, in some cases, were used from morning to night, and they, they were very nice to look at. So what I'd be looking for in this report back is how can we kind of create outdoor dining 2.0? And then we had some public speakers tonight, and we have some letters in the packet from retail that address their concerns. So I think it's very important that we continue to involve retail, office, and downtown residents in the discussion, so everybody has a seat at the table.
Counselor, or Assistant Mayor?
I, I think it's very important when we, when we talk about outdoor dining and we talk about, you know, the vision that we have for Portsmouth, and we, and we look at our master plan, and we look at a more pedestrian-friendly and walkable city. I think outdoor dining plays a huge role in that. I think it's very, very important that we do engage all downtown businesses in this, in this process. Because I, you know, even though myself, I own a restaurant in town, I do not think one, you know, business sector rules our city. We're very diverse downtown. I love that about our downtown. I love that about, you know, other parts of our community, too. But I, I think it's, it's very easy to say, and, and as Counselor Bagley has spoken to lots of residents and some of myself, I think it brought a new level of, of vibrancy to our downtown. And so I think it's very important that we think long-term about what our cityscape looks like. I'm really excited to hear back from city staff on, on what that could look like. I also think it's important to remember that while, you know, indoor dining is back open and at full capacity, there's still hundreds of residents that don't feel comfortable. And we're still in a pandemic, i.e. potentially an endemic. So I think, again, there's several aspects to look at long-term, and I'm excited.
Any other comments, any questions? Just, oh, Counselor Blaylock.
Thank you, your mayor. I just would like to say it's, it's, I think it's important to support all downtown businesses, all businesses in Portsmouth. I think getting more information and allowing businesses to make a more concrete plan would be supporting them financially much more. I know the fixed cost related to, you know, having a new outdoor dining when you haven't. But someone knows that they can guarantee that years to come, then they could make a more substantial investment and probably manage their finances better. So I, I'm all for this, and I, I can't wait to hear the report back.
All right. Just one quick question for the city manager. We typically don't put dates on report backs. Is this a date that we would be able to support, February 22nd?
It is, Your Honor, and it is a date we would be pushing for as well. You will recall that this time last year, we had view permit open for applications in the beginning of February. And we realized that time is of the essence, and we want to allow for folks to make accommodations. So we will be happy to report back at the next council, at the February 22nd council meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I want, I just want to make sure that, and, and I think this is, this is very inclusive motion. I, I want to make sure that we are reporting back on not just our downtown businesses that are interested in outdoor dining, but businesses throughout the city. Because we don't want to neglect a business that, that maybe feels like, oh, I'm stuck with a, I have a parking lot, I'm in a private area. What does that mean for my business for outdoor dining? So I think we, we just, I just want to make sure that in that report back, we get information for the whole city.
That's understood?
Absolutely.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Counselor Cook, I think we took yours up at the previous public hearing. So on to approvals of grants and donations. First up, acceptance of, acceptance of donation to the Police Department, Paul Gormly and Kimi Oguchi for $2,500. Sample motion, move to accept the donation to the Police Department as presented.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, acceptance of donation to the Police Department from Libby Girardano and Make-A-Wish for Captain Michael Maloney on the amount of $15 for Mo's Italian Sandwich gift card. Sample motion, move to accept the donation to the Police Department as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, acceptance of donation to the Portsmouth 400 from Catherine Keenan for $1,623. I like the, I like the number of that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're on to the city managers.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items before you this evening. The first is the approval of the Fire Department's memorandum of agreement. You will recall, we discussed this last meeting in non-public session. And attached in your packet is the proposed MOA language, which would allow for and offer potential lateral transfers, a higher starting rate of pay. And this would help to really allow the Fire Department to be more competitive in hiring. They've struggled with that. They remain among the lowest for base pay in the state. And the MOA also provides compensation for the same relevant experience previously earned by two lateral recent lateral, sorry, earned by two recent lateral transfers to the department. This comes at the request of the Fire Chief with the support of the Commissioner, and Fire Chief Todd Germain is available if we meet him.
And make a motion that we approve the memorandum of agreement. Second.
Motion. We have a second. Any, any questions? Counselor Moreau.
I just, it was nice to hear that both the Fire Department and the union are on the same page, so it makes this a pretty easy increase and change to the agreement.
I would concur. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up.
Thanks very much. Item number two would be a request for an extension of the Neighborhood Parking Pilot Program for the Islington Creek neighborhood. You will recall, this was ratified in September of 2021 with a start date of August 4th of 21 and an end date of February 4th of 2022, which has come and gone this past Friday. We want to share with the group that we are looking to collect a full six months of data and take that data to the March Parking and Traffic Safety Meeting to discuss more fully and with public input at that time, along with public input that we may have at a future council meeting about how best to proceed. So we checked, we gave a midpoint update in November, and we'd like to give a full six-month evaluation to the March PTS meeting. And we would come back to the council with PTS's recommendation with Chairman Bagley.
We have a motion.
Your Honor, I would move that the council approve a two-month administrative extension for the Islington Creek Neighborhood Parking Program, placing its effective end date as April 4, 2022, pending any additional factors.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Counselor Bagley.
Yeah, I'll just comment that this program generates quite a bit of interest in the community. I've received a number of emails, phone calls. I received a number of emails, phone calls, both for, against, and somewhat indifferent to it. I think it's important that we look to possibly schedule the Parking Traffic Safety Committee meeting, that we'll have this on the agenda in the evening, so that more people can attend and speak to it, because I think it's one of those issues that there's, there's a lot of residents that have fairly strong opinions on, and they'd like to be able to speak and be heard about, which is difficult to do at 8:30 in the morning on a weekday.
Counselor Tabor.
Thanks, Your Honor. When this pilot project initiated, a number of us on the council asked, how are we going to measure success? And I wonder if at some point, staff, the city manager can report back to us on that, in particular, consider a survey to the residents of the neighborhood, asking them whether it's easier to park now, or it's really not any different, and what worked and what didn't. And, and I think, right now, the pilot is free. There's no cost to the permits. So would they be willing to pay an annual fee? Those are questions I think would be important to know before, and making it permanent.
Counselor Moreau.
As a 20-year resident of that neighborhood, I happen to be one of the people who has a pilot sticker on her car, I can tell you from my experience, I mean, I don't have to park on the street very often now at our newer house, but we had always more cars than we had parking at our old house across the street. And I always was amazed when this was first put in place, that people who lived there would come home at night and actually have a place to park. So I can say, at least at the start, I saw a huge difference. It's a little bit harder now to tell at wintertime, especially where you can barely drive down our, the McDonough Street area right now. But I saw a huge difference. It'll be interesting to see what the rest of the neighborhood said, has seen, if they've seen the same as me. And I know there are people very much on one side or the other about this. At National Night Out last August, there was, you know, people totally against it, people totally for it. It's like anything else in, in our city. It's, you either feel one way or the other, or you just don't care. That's usually what I find.
Covering all the bases.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we got them all, all over the place. So it'll be interesting to hear the report back on, from the measurements, and if there is a survey, what that report back is as well.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with the administrative extension of this, to actually get this back to PTS, given the change with council, change in meetings with PTS, to be able to have this go back to PTS and for staff to weigh in and bring back to council. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ooh, need a motion to go past 10:30, I guess. We were so close.
We were so close. I so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have the consent agenda, the proper motion for adoption of the consent agenda is to move to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have email correspondence. Sample motion, move to accept and place on file?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have letters from various downtown businesses regarding outdoor dining and the use of parking spaces that was referenced earlier. Sample motion, move to refer to the city manager for a report back to the February 22nd, 2022 city council meeting. I'd assume that this would fall in with the same previous motion.
So moved.
Second. Do we have to vote again, since we kind of already voted that way?
I think so, because they're slightly different.
They're separate letters.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have some informational items.
Thank you, Mayor. First up is a report back on the management of the farmer's market now that the, the entity is essentially changing hands from Seco's Growers Association to Seco's Eat Local. City attorney has reviewed the request and the transfer and feels confident that the new management entity will be suitable to take over. So with your indulgence, we will bring back at a future council meeting the recommended license agreement. Is that correct, Bob?
Correct.
Great. So that is item number one. Item number two speaks to a request made initially by Counselor Denton outlining the charter amendment process. Item three is an update from Shanti Wolf, our not-so-new chief building inspector. He's worked out wonderfully. He provided a written update in a, in an attempt to really bring the council up to speed on, on the, the attempt to catch up, is the best way I can put it. The exciting thing about this is that through an employment agreement for full-time work, we have brought on an additional building inspector to help with the backlog. Tim starts on Monday, February 14th. And I've worked in cities that are twice as big population-wise, and the staffing we are now, we will be able to achieve, when Tim comes on board, will be commensurate with, with building activity and populations of, of what we're seeing. So this will really make a huge dent in helping us to catch up. Shanti's been wonderful. Suzanne Woodland's been working with him closely, and he's been an excellent addition to the team. He's a great leader. The team likes working with him, and he's also working well across departments. That's the update there. And lastly would be PFAS testing updates provided by the deputy city manager, deputy city attorney, relative to both the Artificial Turf Field and Sagamore Creek.
Any questions on these informational items? Counselor Blaylock and Counselor Cook?
Um, city manager, when we're testing for the PFAS, are we also going to be testing the soil? Like, I understand if we don't do a turf field, the alternative would be to do a grass field. But I would like to test the soil to show the comparison. I don't, I don't know if that's a possibility, or if that's...
I'm going to let Suzanne Woodland address that, since I see her, and I also see Peter Ice coming down. It feels like it's angry.
It does. So right now, we have, in terms of the PFAS testing and our contract with the independent third party, it's no to the soil. We adhered very closely to the motion that was passed.
Okay.
So we stuck with that.
Okay.
There is probably PFAS in the soil, as there is...
Yeah. I just don't, my only afraid is that we get results from this, and we have nothing to compare it to, so then, you know, we're not weighing out a cost-benefit analysis kind of as, or as danger to the community.
We are planning to, the consultant that we've engaged will do kind of a brief summary of, of risk, if you will.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, Counselor Cook, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the city manager for the update that we received from the inspections department. That's something that I heard a lot about when I was campaigning about inspections and the process, and, and it's, it's really wonderful to get those updates like that that we can share with our residents.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of people who think that's a great Valentine's Day gift to have their building. Counselor Bagley.
Yeah, just a quick clarification on the farmer's market. I know it's a bit early, but is the plan in anticipation that it will continue to be at City Hall? Are we done with Little Harbor and other locations?
The request would be to maintain the farmer's market at the Upper Lot of City Hall.
So from a resident's perspective, it's new management, but everything more or less looks the same?
Correct.
Thank you.
As far as we understand right now, we do plan to meet with them.
All right. Do we have anything under miscellaneous, including business unfinished at previous meetings? I think so. All right, all right. With that, I'll, I'll wait a moment to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, Portsmouth. Stay safe.